Oak Hills Elementary School teacher who passed away on February 15th made Jennifer's memory be a blessing and of course for good and love and hope in the lives of everyone she touched. Thank you. Roll call. Tess? Sayon? I'm here. Denise? Sina? Jim?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Let's do the flag salute. Anyone please rise, your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to report of closed session actions taken. The board took action to issue a notice of non-relection to a probationary certificated employee identified by employee number 2941 pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21B effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows: five ayes, zero nays, zero abstentions. The board took no other action in closed session tonight, but the board didn't finish everything on its agenda in closed session and we might, if we finish the open session early enough, go back to closed session at the end of the meeting. Okay, we're on to item 4.4, adoption of the agenda. Tess, do you have a preferential vote? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we have public speakers on agenda and non-agenda items. Item 4.5, are there any public speakers? No public speakers. Now we're on to item 4.6, recognition of Oak Hills and Red Oak Elementary Schools on being named the 2023 California Distinguished School. We have a representative, Dale Thomas, from Supervisor Gorrell's office here with us tonight, as well as the principals from Red Oak and Oak Hills, and I'm gonna let Dr. Davis take it from here.
So first, so first of all, wow, that's loud tonight. So first of all, I can't even tell you, I mean, Stu and I came to the schools and congratulated you guys already, but we wanted to make sure that the whole community recognized you and were able to see the excellence in everything you do. And so, we reached out to Supervisor Gorrell's office, obviously spoke to the board members, and this is all being televised, so we want to make sure that all of Oak Park and anyone in the Canale Valley or anybody that's watching this sees the excellence of these two amazing elementary schools. So, I think first of all, we were gonna go to Dale Thomas from Supervisor Gorrell's office? Yes, I was gonna ask. So, we're gonna start alphabetically, so we'll start with Oak Hills Elementary School, Principal Eric Warren and the representatives from Oak Hills. And Principal Warren, would you like to say a few words about your amazing staff and your amazing school and community?
I would be pleased to, but they must get on camera. Come on down. I'm not so familiar with the camera angles, but I'm sure Rogany will tell us where to stand. So, first of all, to the board and Dr. Davis, I appreciate the opportunity to join you in recognizing the incredible staff and students and families of Oak Hills Elementary School. It is truly their work that has earned this recognition, and we're very proud of it. I'm personally incredibly proud of the school and the work that all of you do. I want to just introduce the folks that are here. Alana Schulman is our school counselor. One of the things that is unique to Oak Hills that may or may not be known out there in the ether space where we're broadcasting to, is that we have a school counselor at every single elementary school, and one of the things that represents our climate of care and our priority on that is our school counseling program. Next to her, we have two 4th grade teachers, Chris Lockery and Kristen Germanian, representing the incredible teaching, and that's really the heart and soul of school. Next to them, the most important person at Oak Hills, which is our office manager, Maureen Another unique feature of Oak Park is the fact that we have credentialed PE teachers. Coach Warren's is here, and they provide an amazing program for our kids for 200 minutes every two weeks for the, not only are they getting top-notch physical education, but our teachers are getting extra prep time. And next to her is Heather Sloan, who's our learning support teacher, and one of the things that I think I'm most proud of at Oak Hills and across our district is our multi-tiered systems of support system where we reach out and make incredible impacts on kids that are struggling in any way academically. So Heather Sloan is here to represent that group, which is an amazing group. That's really all I got. Oh, yep.
If I may, I'd just like to say a couple of words. Supervisor Gorrell was very, very disappointed that he couldn't be here this evening. He is still in the Board of Supervisors meeting in Ventura, he's been there since 7:30 this morning. He texted me and said, "Please express my deepest regret that I'm unable to be there," because he is a strong supporter of education. I have the blessing of being his representative to the MAC and also to the school board for Oak Park, primarily because I live two blocks from here. The traffic was a bear getting here. But I did want to mention that we are very, very proud of the work that you've done, and he asked me to please present this certificate to you in recognition of academic excellence as a 2023 California Distinguished School to Oak Hills Elementary School, signed by all of the supervisors.
So, in the spirit of Oak Park, there's excellence all across Oak Park, and on the, you know, other side of Canaan Road, there is another jewel, elementary school, and that is Red Oak Elementary School. And just like Oak Hills, they have an amazing principal and staff and group of students and families, and so will Ms. Stacy LaFrenz, the principal of Red Oak Elementary, and the Red Oak representatives, come on down and bring your flag. Don't forget your flag.
We are very proud, very proud. This is my fifth year at Red Oak, and I can say, the people standing before you definitely welcomed me with welcome, with open arms, and showed me the ropes, showed me all Red Oak and what Red Oak is, and this distinguished honor means a lot, because we worked hard. And it was fun and exciting to always bring and share what we were doing and what we were doing right at Red Oak to earn this award. And it's a lot of work, a lot of rule-following, but I'm so proud of my staff. They did an awesome job, and it's my absolute privilege and honor to represent you. You guys did all the work. Like Eric, I will introduce you as they unwrap the flag. First, I have Jackie Longo. Mrs. Longo is my learning support teacher and interim dean. She is assisting me on a high level, learning the ropes of admin, and she is a huge help and really starting to embrace all that is Red Oak. We are unique and we are special, and it's wonderful to have you. Next, I have Erica White, she's a 2nd grade teacher, backbone of our school, one of our now founding members. Along with that, we have Robin Lund, she started on the very first day at Red Oak in the new building, teaching kindergarten, and she is fabulous. If you ever have a chance and you want to see excellence, visit Robin's kindergarten class. It will bring you joy and remind you of why we do the work that we do. So thank you, Robin, for being here. Kathy Strong is our 3rd grade teacher, amazing, I learned so much from her. Her brain works in wonderful ways, so I don't have to. I just kind of ask her, "So, I know you've been thinking about it, what do you think about this?" And it's a pleasure to get to work with you in your final years of teaching. You've been an absolute privilege to work with, I've learned so much. And then we have Michelle Cash, she teaches 4th grade at Red Oak, and she's also a parent that had her kids go through Red Oak, so she has a unique lens that she shares with us, and she helps us so much with some different community efforts, so you're a large part of what makes Red Oak kind of progressing, so thank you. Awesome job. Congratulations, this is your award. Take some pictures.
I'm gonna personalize this just a moment, if you'll indulge me. A very, very long time ago, I watched a little 8-year-old girl graduate from Red Oak Elementary. She's my daughter, and I am so proud, you set her off on exactly the right foot. We're not gonna talk about how many years ago that was, but I feel very, very close to the school and am very grateful for what you taught my daughter. Thank you. And in that light, I want to present to you in recognition of academic excellence as a 2023 California Distinguished School, Red Oak Elementary.
So we're gonna move on to item 4.7, recognition of Rohan Philip, Oak Park High School student on winning the 2022 Congressional App Challenge. And the principal of Oak Park High School, Mr. McLennahan, is coming to present this.
Thank you for spending all the time recognizing Rohan here. So, Midwestern transplant, so we always like that, right? This is a freshman who has a unique set of skills, but more than that, has a wide array of interests and put two pieces together to win a Congressional App Award. He created his own app, but, and that's exciting and that's wonderful, but his app, he recognized that we have veterans who are trying to sift through all kinds of different sites, all kinds of different places to get information that they can use to better their lives, and they can't do it. So, this young man has built an app that helps them through this process. So the idea that a young man can recognize a need in the community and then step up and do something about it, and we talked about this, he's like, "Well, 'cause I can." It's truly impressive, we're honored to have him here, can't wait to see what he builds in the future, and he's already impacted his community and he'll continue to do so. So congratulations, Rohan.
And so Rohan, you're gonna have two awards tonight. One is from the school board, and this is a certificate of recognition that's presented to you tonight for being the 2022 Congressional App Challenge winner, and we are so incredibly proud of you, and as Mr. McLennahan said, we cannot wait to see what comes next. Really, really excited, and I know Oak Park High School and the Oak Park Unified School District are very, very happy to have you as one of our students. Thank you. Congratulations.
And the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County would like to present you with this certificate, Rohan Philip winner, 2022 Congressional App Challenge. Thank you for your creative commitment to our veterans and their families with the creation of Vet Connect. Congratulations.
honor that you've brought to our school district. So the next item is recognition of Oak Park High School Class of 2023 National Merit Finalists, and again, I'm going to call Mr. McLennahan up for this presentation. Wait, Rogany, I'm sorry, I don't know if anyone can hear you at home, because you're not on a microphone, so I would like it if those names could be, everyone could hear them. I know, it's just, and I appreciate it, but I want everyone to hear.
Okay, so we have Abira Magina. Allison Ting. I have two National Merit Finalists who weren't able to attend tonight, is Lucille Gimare and John Nix.
So, National Merit Finalists, you just need to know some numbers. Every year, about 3.5 million students take the PSAT. Of those, about 16,000 become semifinalists. Of those, about 15,000 become finalists, and about half of those win an award, whether it is from the AMSQ or from QT or from their universities. So, what you're looking at here is mathematically proven excellence. These are students who, nobody writes a letter of recommendation, it's nothing about who do you know, it's not about your resume, it is literally only about, how'd you do on that test? And they crushed it. These are some of the most outstanding students in the United States. They deserve every honor that we can give them, and I'm just proud that you're Oak Park students, and congratulations. So, we also have, we have a couple of pieces of paper for you, right? Manas, here's your second. One is from the district and one is from the county?
Abira?
All right. There you go, you can wallpaper your bedroom. So, I'm not supposed to do this, but I want to tell a story about Allison. So the other day, we were completing an application, and I made the mistake of saying, "Hey, I'm trying to figure out how to do something in Excel." And she looked at me and she said, "Well, I might be able to help you with that." So I explained it to her, and then she said, she looked on her phone, she did some work, and she goes, "What do you know about arrays?" And I said, "Not a lot." She said, "Okay, we'll go into something else." And then she went home and she found another solution to the problem, only from a conversation that we had. So, in addition to excellence academically, the recognition that, "Hey, here's a problem, I want to solve it," is what these students do. They are uniquely prepared to do so, I am so happy to have them on campus. There are two other students who've won these awards who are not here tonight, but this is rare, right? This is really, really rare, and, you know, we have outstanding elementary schools who get honored, and it grows up to be this. So, congratulations to OPUSD, congratulations to my students, and don't forget us when we need a donation in a few years.
Yeah, before we take the picture, I just wanted to congratulate you also. You know, we talked about the test, we talked about taking a test and all those kinds of things, and the amazing problem-solving skills and all that kind of stuff, but this is, this is just absolute brilliance right in front of you. This is something that... So, wait a minute, so the guy who has the Masters from Columbia steps aside, now isn't that interesting? Okay, very interesting, you guys will probably all get accepted there. So, it's, it's just, it's really phenomenal, and I've worked in a lot of school districts, I've worked in a lot of high-achieving places, and to have six, I mean, this is unbelievable, it's very rare, and the thing that is most impressive about you is, it's not just you took a test and you did great and all that kind of stuff, it's, you know, I've looked, I've looked in Q, I see who you guys are, and there's excellence throughout with these students, and all six of them, even the two that aren't here right now, there's excellence throughout, and we're just so proud to have you as Oak Park High School and Oak Park Unified School District students, and we just can't wait to see what the future holds, and you're all gonna do wonderful things, and just thank you for being on our team, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, and I want to thank Supervisor Gorrell's office and Dale for coming and filling in, but just for being here and acknowledging the effort and the excellence, and we hope to see Supervisor Gorrell soon when he's not in a marathon meeting, yeah, tell him we really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, so we're gonna move on to remarks from board members. Does anyone want to start? Megan, I'm gonna pick on you, because you're at the end. Would you like to start?
Sure, sounds good. So since we last met, I attended the Safe Kids Task Force meeting. We talked about how the counselors and other staff are working on developing a comprehensive counseling plan, a suicide prevention plan, and contributing to the Threat Assessment Team Plan that the Safety and Security Task Force is working on. I also heard about some of the creative ways that the counselors are collaborating with each other and sharing ideas to promote social and emotional learning. We talked about the Kindness Month events and how each site was honoring it, and heard also that a lot of kids are struggling to manage anxiety right now. And heard also that a lot of kids are struggling to manage anxiety right now. I also attended the EAC meeting, and the group discussed plans for Earth Day and the recently held drive-up-drop-off recycling event, as well as updates on planting for the Monarch program, and a lot of activities for kids through the gardening program, which was fun to hear about. And I apologize because I wasn't able to attend the recycling event, we have a family health emergency, but I am, I think we should all be grateful that we have people willing to volunteer in a historic storm for that kind of event outside all day. So thank you to those volunteers. I participated in a CSBA webinar for governance teams on trauma-informed education. And I'm happy to share the link if I can. And it was also a pleasure for me to get to sit in on the recent Brookside, on Monterey School PTA meeting, and provide some district updates and reminders, and make a plug for folks to respond to the LCAP survey. And just, I want to thank the team for getting the message out on their platform as well. The Safe Kids and Safety and Security Task Force meetings that were scheduled have, will have to be rescheduled. So hopefully I'll be able to share more about those when those are, when those occur next. Thank you.
Jim?
Greetings. I am proud to say that I went to freshman opening night.
Oh.
And it was great. I won't comment on how many years it's been since I went as a freshman, or for my own son, but it was a wonderful experience. Now, referring to Oak Park as our local community college, having seen all the electives and all the options there are, that are just amendables for the capabilities that we have for all these kids, it's fantastic. I also attended, on a much less exciting night, the Oak Park MAC, where we once again discussed issues of landscaping sidewalks, who's responsible for which tree? I'm serious, with your parts of the Canaan Road there, we finally determined that Rancho Simi Park and Wrenton Park District and the county had a misunderstanding as to who owned the property. It was resolved. The only thing I can say is they're looking forward to a presentation about what's going on at the school for me going forward. So I will be, you know, working on some of them sort of revised highlights of what we've done, because they are very supportive and very interested. So I think it's a great way to continue to build a relationship with that conduit to the county, which will keep Dale and I busy every, once a month on a Wednesday night. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Tina?
My remarks short. I did attend Future Freshman Night, fabulous job by the high school, of course. It was the first one that I've attended in person since my child was a freshman. So it was just really special, I think, to be on campus and seeing all the wonderful programs that we have and just our incredible band, our string section, drum line, color guard, cheer and stunt team. I was also able to spend some time visiting Ms. Anna Meneses' classroom, as well as Ms. Nicole Carter and Mr. Merrick Connor's space. And it was just really wonderful to see all the options and opportunities our students have in the classroom. So just really thank you to all of our staff every day who work so hard to provide these opportunities, as well as our district leadership, I think, in supporting these endeavors. I did want to congratulate all of our students, our coaches, our teachers. I know Rogany did a fabulous job setting out that Oak Park Weekly, which encapsulated so much to celebrate in our district. And it just was such a feel-good moment, you know, coming back after COVID, just to see things in full swing. It's just a testimony, I think, to all of our staff, and Dr. Davis, to your leadership and our district leadership, just to see the continuity in our students that are thriving, just so much happening. And just congratulations to all of our teams, Girls and Boys Basketball and Soccer Teams, Speech and Debate Mock Trial Team, and to all the teachers and the coaches that support these endeavors. And I also just want to lastly thank the county and their collaboration with our EAC, our Environmental Education Awareness Committee, for collaborating to organize the community recycling event in such challenging weather, as Megan had alluded to. So that was pretty remarkable. So thank you for hosting. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Sayon?
I just want to first start off by congratulating our distinguished schools, Oak Hills and Red Oak once again, as well as Rohan Phillip, our Congressional App Award winner, and our seven, am I right about this, seven finalists, six, six merit finalists. It just, it's, I love these kinds of meetings where we have a packed house, and all of those people are people that we are celebrating. And I think I can speak on behalf of the board that we are just so proud of our students, families, and staff, all that contribute to these accomplishments. As far as meetings, I attended two Measure S Subcommittee meetings, as well as one Measure S planning meeting. We talked about our TK facilities expansion, network infrastructure refresh or upgrade, and an update to our Measure S framework. Also attended our first, along with Ms. Helfstein, Math Communities of Practice meeting, which is a new committee or group comprised of representatives from all school sites, board members, and parents. It is kind of a replacement for our math task force, but not really, because it is much more expansive. And I just wanted to share that this was our inaugural meeting, and there's more to come. And also share kind of what, what a community practice is, as well as the purpose of the group. A community practice is a group of people who share a common interest, share best practices, and are working together to fulfill individual and common goals, which is in, in our efforts with math and our math curriculum. And the purpose of this, this community to practice is to ensure equitable student access to mathematics courses while maintaining high academic standards and fostering growth mindsets in mathematics. So I think our next meeting is towards the end of March. And I think we will have meetings about monthly, where we will continue these, these very important discussions around math. Also attended the Ventura County CSBA meeting, along with Ms. Helfstein, and then with Superintendent Davis. And there, we got to recognize our three board members, Denise, but along with our past board members, Drew and Derek, for their eight years of, of just wonderful volunteering and service to our, our board. Along with the other board members that have served eight-plus years. I think there was a board member that actually served thirty, twenty-some years, so that was, that was amazing. At that meeting, the topic that was discussed was school safety. And there was a panel of experts that discussed how Ventura County schools, including Oak Park, OPUSD, and law enforcement agencies within the county are collaborating like never before to ensure the safety of students and staff. So I was really impressed by that collaboration and the efforts that the VCOE, as well as our local VC, SBA, and, you know, the programs that they are running, but the collaboration with law enforcement agencies, I think, is kind of a first. And hopefully will serve as a model for other school districts in the country. Also attended Curriculum Council and ETF meetings. Also attended Future Freshman Night. And fantastic performances by cheer, color guard choir, jazz, strings, drum line, I hope I'm not forgetting anyone, but just all fantastic performances, and also got to visit some of the classrooms, which was wonderful. And I sort of had a sneak peek of what's to come for my future freshman. And let's see, I think, one more. Attended the last, not this past one, but the January MAC meeting where Supervisor Garrell came. And, like, that's it. That was, I guess, a busy month.
I was just going to say, that's it? There's one perk of being the board president with this board, and that is that you get to just say at the end, "I echo everything all of you said. You guys explain everything and thank everyone in just the way, such a beautiful way." And I just want to echo what all of you said, and I will try to keep it short and just go through my activities for this month. I also attended the Community of Practice meeting that Sayon explained so well. I did attend the D-LAC meeting. I went to Ventura County School Boards Association Dinner Meeting and heard the school safety topic, which was really well done. I've been on the Safety and Security Conference Call. I did get the opportunity to go with the principals and Dr. Davis and Ms. Herzog down to Anaheim. It was a nice drive in my car. A long, long drive to Anaheim and back. I don't know what it was about the traffic, but it was a lot. But we were able to pick up the award for the distinguished school. And it was just really fun to be with them and to receive that and get the picture with Superintendent Herman. I also went to the Saturday Annual Recycling Drive and volunteered a little bit. And I just want to say, again, I know I said this last year, that it seems like our community really values and looks forward to this, and really sees it as a service that our district is doing for them. So many people who got out of their cars said, you know, "I wait for this, I have my box of shredding, I have my batteries." I, and they really appreciate it. They thanked me, even though I said that they should be thanking Brendan and everybody else. And so in that vein, I want to thank the EAC Committee, and Brendan, and Tammy, and everyone in our district who made that event possible. I volunteered until like 11:00 or 11:30, and then I went home, they relieved me, and then it hailed and was like ice storm or whatever was going on. And I thought for sure we would pack it in, but I kind of drove back down to see if people needed help, and they were all still, the cars were going through. So what an incredible job that all the volunteers from the county too, from the county and from our school district, stayed out there in the hail, collecting everybody's recycled items and bikes and everything that we were collecting that day. So I just wanted to give props for that. Went to the Measure S Committee meeting, talked about the tech plan and also the new mandate for TK and the adjustment to the framework, like Sayon was saying. I went to Future Freshman Night, and it was fun to go with you, Jim, walk around with you, because you hadn't been there in a while, and just listening to you and the questions you were asking, it was, it was nice. And I also went to Course Advisement at the high schools. So those are my activities, and I think that's it for all of us. So we can go on to remarks from our student board member Tess.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys had a restful four-day weekend not too long ago. And since the last meeting, the high school has held another blood drive with the American Red Cross. And I'm happy to report that we collected 38 units of blood, which can save 114 patients a week. Last week, I helped out during the high school's Future Freshman Night, and I'm glad I got to see some of you guys there. I'm also very glad that I could see a lot of teachers and students putting in their time and efforts to make sure that these future freshmen felt welcome. And we also had our third rally of the year last Friday. And although the school was in a little chaos because of the rain, we witnessed some amazing performances from marching band, dance, and cheer. But however, due to this severe weather, we were unable to carry on for our spring fling dance, so it is postponed to next month. Recently, our mock trial team placed second in the competition, so that's a big congratulations to them. Not only that, our girls' basketball won their Division CIF championships. And both of these teams have worked very hard, so the schools are very proud to have their efforts pay off. And the Oak Park High School International Festling Society is having their spring musical on March 9th to March 11th. They'll be performing the family favorite show, The Addams Family, and I know that they're going to be very phenomenal. So additionally, course selection for the following school year has already begun. And I do have very high hopes for the new bell schedule, and I believe that students and staff will make great use of it, especially this seventh period. So this concludes my remarks for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tess. And now we'll go on to remarks from the superintendent.
Good evening. Myself, Mr. McGugan, Mrs. Herzog, and Mr. Roush have started our superintendent's office hours. It's something I started last year as an outreach to the school sites, so we can hear from the school sites in terms of, you know, what's on their mind, what's working, what's not, what do we need to stop doing, what do we need to start doing? And honestly, just to get to know people, right? Just to get to put a name to a face and those types of things. And we've had a really nice group of meetings. We've had Oak Park High School and Brookside Elementary School and Oakview High School so far, and the other schools will be upcoming in the coming weeks. So we really appreciate when people come out and talk to us. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate our mock trial team here at Oak Park High School. Last year, they were Ventura County champions, and this year, they came in second, barely second. They just about won the county competition for a second consecutive year. So congratulations, Dr. Victor Anderson, and all of the mock trial competitors. What a great group of kids. I'm actually going to go visit them in their classroom this Thursday afternoon, so I'm excited about that. Third, our Speech and Debate team at Oak Park High School, just phenomenal, qualified for state. You know, I mean, this just keeps going, right? All these different things, and just really proud of all those students. I, I was very, very fortunate one day to be at Brookside Elementary School when the group of students in Speech and Debate were at, at Brookside. And it was really, really neat to listen to them, and they taught the students at Brookside all the different types of debate. And it was so neat to watch the faces of the elementary students, looking at the, the high school students and learning about debate and watching them, and it was, the, the topic was great. So the debate was, what is better, cake or ice cream? So you can imagine, I mean, this was phenomenal, right? I mean, it just went on and on and on, and it was so great, the power for arguments that were presented and things. But the most important thing to me was the height, the elementary kids got to see that, and now they can aspire to be in Speech and Debate when they get to Oak Park High, when they get to Oak Park High. So I thought that was great. This coming Thursday night, we have Future Panther Night at Media Creek Middle School. Looking forward to that. And also something really cool at Oak Park High School is the mock college admissions. Very, very cool. Mrs. Amanda Fitz, the College of Career Counselor here at the high school, has connected with several college admission reps, so on and so forth. And yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be really cool to see that on Thursday night. And I know a lot of parents are very excited about that, and a lot of students are very excited about that. I think it's a really wonderful thing that we're doing, you know, for, for our students and families. Next, I wanted to piggyback a little bit off of Tess. I wanted to sort of challenge people out there to show up opening night, March the 9th, for the Addams Family. I know I'm coming, so if I can come, you can come, right? So I'm challenging you to come out and watch this amazing musical. I think you guys are going to really, really love it. You're going to really enjoy it. Future Freshman Night, I can't say much more. It was amazing. It was fantastic. I really got a kick out of not just the performing groups in the gym, but I really enjoyed going to Mr. Preston's robotics class. I really enjoyed going to Mr. Palucci's animation, you know, those types of things, and going to the breakout rooms for the different clubs and organizations and athletic teams and things like that. It was really, really fun. I really enjoyed myself with that. And then finally, I had a wonderful time Saturday morning, driving out to Manhattan Beach to Miracosta High School. Mr. McLennan, of course, was there, Mr. Meskey, Mr. McGugan, Coach Webb, teachers from Oak Park High, all these parents from the girls' basketball team, and it was so enjoyable to watch them win the CIF Division V championship. It was such a, it's such a remarkable story that is ongoing with this team, where they, they were, they had a really difficult season last year. And Mr. McLennan, Mr. Meskey hired, Ms. Klemecky hired a wonderful new coach, Mr. William Burr. And they won the CIF championship in one year. They went from winning one game last year, overall, in the entire season, to being CIF champions this year. And what an incredible thing for these girls. What a, what a wonderful thing for them. And I'm not going to announce the score of tonight's first-round state regional playoff game. It has concluded. I'm going to leave that up to Oak Park High School's principal, Mr. McLennan, to tell the world as soon as he begins his bell schedule presentation.
So now we'll move on to item 4.12, update on revised Oak Park High School bell schedule for the 23-24 school year.
So we won 71 to 60. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty shocking, right? Amazing, amazing group of student athletes who, to get to Hatchapi, to play the game, was a, was a big challenge because of the snowfall. And, and I, I do have to say, big thanks to Hatchapi, because they moved the game up for us, right? So their administration recognized the safety issue, and they moved the game up so we could get it played tonight. And so, big thanks to them. The girls will be playing in a couple of days. We'll find out where we're here in a little bit.
So what is next? Is it sectional or is it state?
So they're in the, in the state playoffs, right? And so, you know, they do four, you know, north, south, central, I don't even know what they are. But they get that to a final four. And so we're in the round of 32, instead of 16. So now we're in the round of 16 in the, in the southern bracket. Yeah. We played in the, in the, in the division playoffs, we played in Division V. They moved us to Division III for the state playoffs, and we just won our first-round game. It, this is... It, this is, this is shocking. Okay, I, I don't know if I can describe. This is, this is unbelievably amazing and, um, really very, very proud.
I just want to add one thing and it's with, um, not just a new first year coach, but a, um, a team that only has two seniors on the team and no seniors that start. And, um, a lot of freshmen and sophomores on this team and a, a very, very good junior. And, um, they will play either Moreno Valley High School or San Diego Cathedral Catholic, um, on Thursday. And if it's Cathedral Catholic, the game will be in San Diego. But if it's Moreno Valley, the game will be right across campus.
Thanks, Ragani. So the bell schedule has been, uh, item number one, number two, number three for the past year and a half here. Um, so I want to give you an update on, on where we are for our best bell schedule for, for next year and give you a little bit of insight in how that plays out for our students' experience, okay? So the, the background for this is that the bell schedule had to change because of SB 328, um, which went into effect last year. Uh, it says essentially that any minutes before 8:30 AM at high schools can no longer count towards our annual institutional instructional minutes. You have to have 64,800, uh, or 1,080 hours of instructional minutes for your high school and your, in your program for it to count as a year. Historically, we had used our zero period to count in our instructional minutes. That was before 8:30. We could no longer do that. So last year, we had a whole bunch of meetings and, um, working in a, in a real fog, um, not really knowing exactly what was and what was not going to be counted. Um, we came up with the plan of what we're using this year, which is essentially, we took our old structure and we lengthened the blocks. And we would take some of that block time and embed support time into those blocks. But some of the pros was that we did build in the support time and you had time for, for longer labs. But we had some significant, um, difficulties with the bell schedule that we have this year. Um, and I'll give you some data on, on what people thought of those, um, as we move forward here. So our, our plan the entire time was because we knew we had to change because of the change in the state law, our anticipation was, we had a bell schedule for 15 years here, changing it the first time. We're not going to, it's not going to be one and done. We're going to have to keep coming back this, we're going to have to keep reviewing it. And we will review it again next year to see how we're doing. Um, but you're going to see some pretty conclusive data that says that what we're doing this year was not working. And so we've been working on what can we do better for next year? And I'll show you the new plan. So this is, this is all background. This is what we did last year where we, we had a, a bunch of meetings and talked to other schools and looked at other schools and tried to figure out how everybody was doing. Um, what, what it is that they, they, uh, what, what are other schools doing and what do they like about it? So we started again, um, this past year, we started in October. First off, we said, look, is, do we need to do this? If you're really happy with what's going on, then we'll just continue on with what we're doing. So we found out in the fall they were not. So we started the process of, we visited other schools, we looked at their schedules. Um, and we, we had a whole bunch of meetings trying to figure out what it, what it was that, what, what were our options to, to make this happen? You'll see that we, in November, the faculty voted and we did ranked voting. So we, and you'll see the results of that ranked voting here in a little bit. Um, and then we took the top two, uh, we took the top one out of those with the, and then the current schedule. And we met with site leadership, our union representation and the district office to hammer out what it is that we would, um, go back to parent, students and everybody, uh, all the educational partners to figure out which would you like? Right? So we narrowed it down from the current schedule to the best other option that we could come up with. Okay? And then we presented that to the board or to the, um, to our staff in mid-December. So here, this is what you're going to see in the, in the next few slides are just some, some, some graphs to give you a pretty good visual sense of what it is. If it's, if it's on the right-hand side, that means no, right? Things on the left means good. So do we like it? Should we keep it? No. Students, teachers, no. Very clearly, no. Okay, so we move forward from that. When we talked to teachers, we asked them kind of why? What is it about this that, that wasn't working? So this is length of day, right? So again, if it's on the right-hand side, this is a negative. So the length of the day itself was very challenging, okay? When you're a teacher, you're, you're looking at making sure that you can meet students' academic needs. Again, the, the skew here is pretty clearly very challenging. You can keep going, Ragani. One of the, one of the unintended consequences of running the schedule that we ran this year that became apparent very quickly was students missing class because of their events and how, how much of a challenge it has been for, for those, uh, in those situations. Like that's been a significant thing and you can again, see very clearly, very challenging for everybody. One of the difficulties in our, in our historic schedule, we had, uh, an optional support seventh period. And we could schedule meetings like our SST 504's IEP meetings during that time. That was no longer an option. So that meant that SST 504's IEP meetings this year have to be scheduled during class time, during regular class time. So, uh, a significant, about a third, a little over a third of our, of our teachers said this was the most, one of the most, most challenging aspects of the new schedule because sometimes it pulls teachers out of classes. Sometimes it pulls teachers out of their support or their, their conference time, their prep time to cover other teachers who need to be in these meetings. Because we want to get, make sure that those meetings have, um, representation of the teachers, figuring out how to best support our students. So this was been something that's been incredibly difficult this year. If I'm being honest, I had a, I had two meetings about this today. This is a big deal. This has been very challenging. The day's been a little longer, right? And the math says that it's going to be. And we recognize that with the long blocks, by the end of the day, our students have been extremely tired, right? The end of the third block of the day has been difficult for teachers and for students. So I mentioned earlier that we were going to, uh, we did some, some ranked voting. Again, if it's on the right-hand side of any of these charts, that's, means that it's not good. So what you'll see there is the current schedule is the first graph. And then it says NPHS with support time or CPT time in there. That is based off of the structure that Newberry Park High School put together, which is, I, I visited Newberry Park, um, Mr. Shivali and I visited Newberry Park, had a meeting with their principal, talked through the, all the details of how they're running their plan. Um, other, other, uh, officials from the district talked to other schools to figure out who, who's doing what. The schedule that we have this year, by the way, is essentially roughly the same schedule that Calabasas and Agora had in their first year of doing this plan. This was a, a pretty common way to, to address this. And, um, we actually took a look at what they're doing in their second year. They started a year ahead of us. What they're doing in their second year and, and it was, um, very similar to what they did the year before, not different enough. And given all the other data, we said we don't want to even go down that road. So we looked around to other schools to see how they were doing it. Newberry Park was very clearly the second, uh, the most popular of the other choices. But when you're looking at these things, you have to, um, decide, are you going to stay with what you've got? Or are you going to go with the next best option, right?
Yeah, I just want to say too, for, for the board and for everybody out there, uh, Mr. McGugan and I were involved in this too. And countless schedule. I mean, we looked at schedules from northern, extreme Northern California to the Bay Area, down to Central California, down to the San Gabriel Valley like Lockenada, San Marino. Uh, you know, districts and schools very much like ours. And honestly, we must've looked at at least 30 different, maybe that's a lone number. There were so many schedules we looked at.
I, I had a stack of 20 on my desk. I had a stack that I had printed out and, and looking at all of them to try to figure out who's doing something interesting. And some of them, you know, the, the details of, of every single school, um, the, the operation of every single school, um, dictates a lot, the, the, the pieces of it dictate a lot of what you can and you cannot do. There's a whole lot of schools, as, as Dr. Davis has mentioned, that we looked at. They have, um, they have, uh, periods built into the day that they can, um, like a homeroom, um, things like that, that, that wouldn't mesh with what, what we were doing here. So we were able to look at a bunch of high-performing schools, but they have pieces that, that wouldn't fit here. Um, so advisory periods, things like that. So when we got to, when we went to, we liked what Newberry Park had. We went to the school, we talked to them, we pulled it back. And when the, uh, when the faculty voted with ranked voting, it was, it was the pretty clear favorite. So we narrowed it down to the two that are on the left there. I'll come back to this in just a second, but in addition to that, we asked teachers, given that this would have a seventh period that, um, would be part of our regular schedule, we wanted to get a sense of teachers who think, yeah, I would really like to teach a seventh period. Or, and/or, would you like to teach a zero period class? So we're still offer a zero period in this, when we're planning this, we would still offer a zero period class. It would not be included in our instructional minutes, but it has been a historical piece of our schedule here that many in our community have liked. And we wanted to see if teachers were still interested in doing that in addition to, um, teaching at the end of the day. And I'll come back to this just in a minute. So this is the schedule, um, that we, that we took to, to vote. Um, and what you can see is that there's, the basic structure of it is very similar to what we already have. Again, zero period doesn't count in instructional minutes and that first passing period does not count as instructional minutes. But then there are three blocks and then a seventh period. And if you look at the minutes per class, um, on zero period and seventh period, you can see that we're trying to, um, basically take what historically was zero period, put it at the end of the day. We left, this was a, a kind of a difficult decision, but we had to figure out where we're going to put our staff meetings. And we decided that one of the ways to do that would be to keep it with zero period, whatever classes end up there would be a little bit longer and only meet four days a week versus the seventh period classes that are going to meet five days a week. Right? And then you can see that on the right-hand side, you see the support schedule. So if you look to the third row from the bottom, you see support time. That is going to be, like we traditionally did, an optional support time for teachers to go to office hours, uh, teachers to have office hours for students to go ta- take tests, pick up anything that they may have missed, ask questions of teachers, things like that. And I'll show you how we're going to structure that, uh, into the, into the calendar just in a minute. So this is what we, we took to vote and we wanted to talk to teachers, students and parents. So this was a very close vote. The teachers, um, really said, no, no, we think we'd like something new, right? But it's going to get, it's going to get even closer. So the parents wanted something new and the students wanted something new. And it wasn't close, right? So this was not a difficult choice to make. The difficulty was in all the prep work and putting all the pieces together, um, and seeing how we can make this actually work. But very clearly, across the community, everybody said, great, you tried this this year, but let's move on. So we've got a new schedule for next year. What you see there in the middle, the, the kind of greenish days, those are going to be our support days. So when you take the three blocks per day and they rotate through, you, you know, zero period will be there, but then 2, 4, 6 or 1, 3, 5, you'll see that the Wednesdays are going to be support days for the whole year. And then the other days will, will, the other support day will go back and forth between Tuesdays and Thursdays, depending on where it falls in that block cycle. What that will do is do two things. Number one, it'll give all of the, uh, students and teachers, uh, an anchor. Wednesdays will always be support days. But then depending on what students have for their personal schedules, they'll, they'll have options, um, as the weeks go on. Sometimes Tuesdays, sometimes Thursdays, and they'll be able to go back and forth with that. You can see there in the, kind of the top third of the, of the, uh, of the calendar there, that the days off from school mess with the cycle. So there's a lot of Tuesdays in a row there. Um, but other than that, we go, we go back and forth essentially. Dr. Davis?
Yeah, uh, Mr. McClanahan, um, Wednesdays was part of that decision based on that's probably the lowest absence rate day because it's in the middle of the week. Is that, and you don't have to deal with holidays and stuff like that?
The, the, it was more the, the second, right? So the, the absences, I don't have the hard data, so this is, um, but normally you're going to get more absences on Mondays and Fridays. Um, the, the other absence that we, we deal with is a lot is extracurriculars. But those rotate through, different sports are different days. But, um, by moving the, uh, the second support day of, of every week, moving it around, we hope to avoid having somebody always getting hit every single time that they're always missing that class. By the way, this, this, this was an idea that I, I would love to take, uh, responsibility for this. I would love my department chairs to take responsibility for this. This was a teacher who looked at this and went, hey, can we do this? We took it to our, uh, site leadership meeting. And at first, the first minute, we all kind of went, huh? And then within 10 minutes, we were done. It was, it's just the right idea and that's come, that came from one of our classroom teachers and it's fantastic. This is the same schedule. Just wanted to show you again that we are planning on having a zero period and a seventh period. Um, and I want to explain that a little bit. When, go, go back. Sorry. It's this, that one. I just, the schedule, yeah. So what you can see, if you put this together with the block calendar, you can start to figure out how we calculate our instructional minutes. So the instructional minutes that count are either in the class or passing periods. Nutrition, lunch, anything before 8:30, those don't count as instructional minutes. So you have to get to 64,800. And so that goes back and forth between A days and B days that you saw, uh, in the, in the block calendar. Now you can go on to the next one. So what we did is we did our own internal calculation. We had the district office do it independently of us. And then we sent it to our auditor, um, to three different, that way we had three different ways to, to determine whether or not we meet the state requirement. And in all three cases, we are, uh, we've, we've met the threshold of 64,800. So what's going on right now, and there'll be a little more detail as we go forward, but students are making their requests for next year, literally right now. Um, they're being asked if they're interested in taking a zero or a seventh. Um, athletes in almost all the sports, there's a couple that's not true for, are being asked, uh, they're being told that their sport class will be during that seventh period time. Um, we are planning on having a handful, I think it's four, it might be five, I can't remember, of eighth period classes like rocketry that have, have historically been, um, have, uh, been in eighth period. They haven't been part of that schedule that I've shown. They meet at different times because of the nature of the class. Um, one of the more important pieces of this is the, one of the reasons zero period had been so popular was that stu-, that seniors could have that third block of the day as a free or double free, both fifth and sixth periods. So every day they could have that last block of the day free. Um, but because zero period minutes don't count as instructional minutes, that is no longer true. There is a possibility that seniors could have the first block of the day free if they were to take periods three, four, five, six, seven, right? They would have those classes and they do meet the, there's another requirement that I haven't listed on here. In addition to the 64,800 minutes for the institution, every single student over any two-day period has to average 240 minutes of instructional time every two days. So that's why the zero period historically would have worked. The way the minutes add up on the The way the minutes add up on the new schedule, zero period with those because they don't count, you can't get to the two-forty that way. But you can get it if they were to take seventh period going that, that direction. Right now, as we said, um, like literally right now, um, the, uh, course requests are being made. It closes this Sunday. Um, and as we've always done, it started with rising twelfth graders, current eleventh graders, and then rising eleventh, rising tenth, and then new ninth graders will open up this weekend. Following that, the month of March is when our counselors go have individual one-on-one meetings with students. So they see their requests, and then they sit down and they talk to them, and they say, is this, is this what you want? Is this, what, what is your plan? What, you know, why do you want to do it this way? Are we missing anything? And making sure that they are on path to graduation, um, the way that they want to do it. So that'll be, that'll be the month of March. On the right-hand side of this, you can see the way the master schedule will then be built. So we go through the course requests, we have the counselor meetings in March, and then in April, we clean that all up, making sure that everything is right. And then we start going through, and we've actually had, uh, some specialized training on master schedule building this year. Um, we're going to go back through and looking at, uh, what you see, it says conflict and singleton scheduling. So conflicts are when you have students who are enrolled in two classes that only meet at one time. Some of that is, you can see it says slash singleton, a lot of that it becomes because they want to take a specialized class that only meets one period. We don't have multiple sections of it running. Therefore, if they have two of those and they both meet fourth period, then they're sort of stuck, right? And so we have to go through and talk to them and, and, and clean that all up. Um, in, that'll be in April. Then in May, we go back with our department chairs and we, we work through how to allocate our FTE and figure out who's going to be teaching what exactly where. We then, um, talk, we have to talk to OPUS to figure out what their student requests are, because OPUS students can take a couple of classes here. So that changes our seat numbers, and we have to make sure that that is correct. Um, and then in June, we have to look at how did the end of the semester impact that? Students who thought they were going to pass a class but did not. Or, um, students who have, it says confirmation of summer school, students who say, hey, I'm going to go take summer school, and then we say, are you sure? Because we're planning, when we have our counseling conversations, we're planning on, this is what you told us, this is what we expect to happen. If that doesn't happen, then we have to change the whole, the whole plan for every student. And anytime you change any student, it has a domino effect and changes the number of seats in any, any classroom. Dr. Davis?
And the default, the default is that the student will pass their summer school class. So if they end up not taking summer school or in some crazy way not passing, you know, then that has to get fixed, but you know.
That's the last bullet point.
Yeah, typically they'll pass their summer school. So the default is that they will pass.
Yep. So then we actually, in, in June and July, or July, we run our student loader. So we plan this thing all out over the course of about three months, and then we hit the button and we say, put the kids in there. And then we have to go back through it individually, student by student, to make sure that there's, that we catch every mistake that we possibly can. And then we come back after the summer, planning on, hey, everything's done, we're already good, we got your requests, we put you in the classes, everything's good. But that registration period comes back and students have either not passed a class or not taken a class, or taken classes that they didn't tell us, and that changes everything. And so then we have a week where we spend time trying to clean everything up so that we can get ready for classes in that first week in, in August. Right? One of the, the, the last bit here is, and I know this is a lot, this is, again, this is what we've been talking about for, for a long time. One of the questions I was asked was, why did we ask teachers about zero period and seventh period? Why do they want to teach it? Well, zero period is really easy. Zero period is not contractual time. So we're not going to put anybody in a zero period, teach, to teach a zero period class if they don't want to do that, right? The seventh period one is a little more complicated. It is during contractual time, but you want to start with teachers who want to teach seventh period. You want to start with voluntary. If we get, second bullet point on the left there is, we, if we get a lot of student requests to say, we want to take seventh period, we, we want it, we want to have a full schedule all the way to the end of the day, and we have more in there than we have, more requested seats than we have voluntary teachers, then teachers will get assigned into teaching those period, that period. However, seventh period is optional for students, right? So they, they, they're going to be making some choices. My, I'll tell you my, my one fear, not one, one of my biggest fears is if you put those last two bullet points on the left and the right together, when you say to students, hey, you don't have to take seventh period, and they come back after the summer and now they say they want to take a seventh period, that's my biggest, one of my biggest concerns, because that changes everything. We're going to have a master schedule, we're going to be able to go tell teachers, this is what you're teaching, but if that shifts significantly, then we have to move teacher schedules around a lot at the last minute, and nobody wants that, right? So that's why we have lots of meetings with, uh, students to try to make sure that they, they have a sense of what they want to do, and that's what we're going to do.
I have a question.
And that's my presentation, so.
Um, so I appreciate that you've had training regarding the master schedule. I know there's been steps and we've had some concerns, you know, I've heard from a lot of students that, and it also impacts staffing too, when scheduling, like schedules aren't quite fixed for the first couple of weeks of school and staff have students coming in and out, it's, it's kind of disruptive as well. So, Ragani, can you go back to that slide that we were just on? So in terms of those steps that are there, what's different than how we have done it in the past, I guess, to help mitigate some of those issues that we've discussed?
The steps themselves aren't, the steps themselves aren't different, but the conversations inside those steps are going to be significantly different. There's a lot more detail involved in this because we're not basing it off of a, a, a plan that we've had, a structure we've had for fifteen years. Every one of these little details, particularly the athletics, being in seventh period class, all of those conversations have to be direct with students to make sure that we know what their plan to do is. So the actual steps of when are we going to do what is largely the same, but the conversations are going to be significantly different.
Yeah, I think one of the ones with, um, is with, one of the things for sure I can point to is with summer school and pass, and the default to pass, because, um, it hasn't been done that way historically at, almost at a different school, sorry, Oak Park High School. Um, and, and that's a big deal. And in the master schedule training that Dr. Roger Rice has been providing, um, and that Mr. McGugan and me and Mrs. Herzog have been attending along with the high school and the middle school, that's a big thing, and he hit on that right away. He said, well, I think that'll cut out a large percentage of those problems, because if, if you default that they're going to pass, and like ninety-eight percent of kids likely pass summer school, then you may only have two percent to fix as, as opposed to the opposite numbers, right? So if a kid, if a, uh, you know, Johnny Jones says, you know, yes, I'm going to take , uh, world history in summer school, or I'm going to take whatever in summer school, when the counselor meets with the student and they say, we're going to take it in summer school, so they now know they're taking that course, default is pass, so now they, it's world history now, okay, they don't need to take that, they can take something else, right? And so I think that solves a lot of it. The other part that was, um, a little bit of an issue, and I think that actually at schools I worked in it, sometimes it would happen too, is when, um, you know, students had holes in their schedules, you know, oh, there's, they don't have a period three class, they don't have a period five class, they don't have a period two, like, how's that happen? Um, well, there's, it, it's a mindset in master scheduling where every student needs to be accounted for, there has to be a seat for every student, every period. And even when a student is quote-unquote home, so let's say a student, you know, um, they're a senior, they've made most of their requirements, they've done zero period, whatever, and they don't really go to third block, you still need to have a place for them, third block, because then you know you at least have a slot for a class for every single student. I think that's another mindset thing that has been emphasized quite a bit in our trainings, that, um, I'm not saying it wasn't happening, but I, I think it's, it's being reinforced very strongly, and that helps with holes in schedules. That way every child has a class every period and to start with, and then you can work back from there or work forward from there, however it works. I just know that was been a point of emphasis.
It has been a point, I, I would just say though, you know, specifically to the question, I don't think that the, the steps are different, but I think the conversations are different.
Sounds like those two big shifts will help absolutely. And then the second question I had, um, was in terms of data. So one of our goals as a board was to really use data to drive decision-making. So I don't know if this is historically been done, but I think one telling thing, I think most students, especially in Oak Park and their families, are pretty clear about what they want to take by the time course selection comes. I mean, these students are on it from what I see. You know, very little will change, there obviously will be changes later, but for the most part, your core classes have been selected. What I would be interested in seeing is seeing the data at this juncture, right? I'm assuming it would be relatively easy and not very cumbersome and cute, but correct me if I'm wrong, to see what is being selected, what changes, I guess, afterwards, if there's any sort of adjustment period in one of those steps, I, I think after the counseling meeting perhaps, and then what ultimately gets filled, right? Because I think for us as a board, I think it helps in evaluating resources, it evaluates, um, demand, what are our students interested in? And it may change from year to year, but without that data, it's really hard to tell. So I think just to kind of gauge our population and, you know, where our students are at, what courses are most popular, it would be really helpful, and I think also good to see the progress, right? The changes now that there's been training, and now we have any bell schedules, um, just to see, it might just be very telling. So it would be nice to have some form of constructive methodology, I think, to just track these changes and see how we can better serve our staff and also our students.
Right after the last period ends, does that mean kids can just go home if they're not taking the seventh period, or do they have to stay all throughout support time even if they're not going to ask for a teacher?
They can go home.
And then also, are we going to tell the students and staff how the alternating pattern is going to work with support?
Oh, yeah. So if you, actually, can you go back to the block calendar? There's a pretty important word on there, just, if you see the first word on the left, yeah, it says it's a draft. Um, we just haven't had the leadership meeting, so after we go through, we developed this in our last leadership meeting. I think it's pretty close to being exactly right, but technically it hasn't been finalized. So once we vote on that in, in leadership, once it's out there, done with that, then we'll post it for everybody to see.
Okay, I was just going to ask something really quick. So Tess, you actually, our minds are thinking similarly. Mr. McLennahan, could you walk through how if kids might be getting out earlier, but they, they still meet their, you know how you talked about the two-hundred-and-forty?
Yeah.
How they still meet their instructional requirement?
So if, so, let's look, um, on the, on the regular, the non-support day, right? So a student who, first block, a hundred minutes, passing period, ten minutes, second block is a hundred minutes, so that's two-hundred-and-ten. You get to the third, the second, next passing period is, is two-twenty, and then you go to the third block, right? So now you're well over three-hundred. So that, that gets you to the two-forty on average. You can actually split it out so that, you know, um, an upperclassman might have just one of those days off, one of the blocks, fifth or sixth, um, but they get there even without the seventh period, right? So again, no individual student needs to be, meet six-thousand, sixty-four thousand eight hundred minutes. That, that's an institutional number, but no individual student has to meet that number. They can, they just has to average two-hundred-and-forty every two days.
So on that note, is that, what's the difference in instructional minutes, I guess, in terms of what the students are receiving, if any? You know, it's hard to tell without having the previous schedule on the.
For, for an individual student?
No, you, you mean institutionally, what, what was the difference between our last schedule and this one? Correct, yeah.
Oh, the overall, the institutional, so, um, the schedule that we have here is, um, when the accountant, the accounting firm went through it, it was over sixty-five thousand minutes.
It's, it's, was recalculated today. So it's sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty.
Okay, which is, um, I don't actually have the number from, um, this year with me. Um, I can, I can get it to you if, if you'd like, but, um, we were closer to, um, sixty-five thousand even, I think, last year. Just, uh, sixty-five, four, I think, but don't quote me on that, I have to check it. So, so there's, there's going to be actually, the total instructional minutes is, uh, is going to go up. If you, if you really get into it, when you're counting passing period, it's not class time, it's what's counted as instructional minutes, so I haven't done the calculation of class time.
So even though students aren't taking period seven, we're allowed to count it as instructional time?
Absolutely.
Is that right? Okay.
Oh, you know what? That's a great question. I didn't even say that. Let me say this, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, so this, when I mentioned earlier in passing, I said, last year we were in a little bit of a fog about what would and would not count. So we had meetings with, uh, we, we talked to the accounting firm, we talked to other schools, we talked to union representation to try to figure out who knew what would count as an optional seventh period. And the reality was, nobody knew. We were getting different answers from all, a bunch of different people, and so we were fairly conservative, which is why we went with the block schedule lengthened that we did this year. We didn't want to take a risk that we would get to the end of the year and they'd say, oh, by the way, that doesn't count, that's a huge fine, it's a big mess, we didn't want to go there. So we went pretty conservative. We're very comfortable this year, um, with the options that we're putting out for seventh period, even just with the voluntary teachers, because we have teachers who are in every grade level, we have classes that are across the departments, so that we have lots of, um, we have lots of options available. The language that we got from our auditor says, this is where it gets a little bit tricky, is if a student wants a seventh period class, so if they want to be enrolled in a classroom in that seventh period, we have to provide that for them. Not that specific class, not they, you know, not French II in seventh period, but we have to give them a class if they want to be on campus in a class at that time. That's the, one of the reasons that we were asking, we're asking students during the course request, do you want to take a seventh period, so that we can put that together?
Yeah, and so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, because I wanted to explain that too for the community. So as we've gotten two, um, opinions from our auditors, from our, our auditing firm, and it's, there's a difference between offering and requiring. And in the management advisory that the CDE put out based on this new ed code and this new law, it's the offer that matters, it's not the required. And I know that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah, it's, we, we, we have, we will have to be able to show that we offered a, a deep enough and broad enough, uh, set of classes in that seventh period to count it as instructional, institutional instructional minutes.
And if you see, if you look at the, if you have the link and you can look at the classes, you'll see there are, you guys did a really good job on it, because there's a lot of multi-grade level classes, there are classes in every core subject area, there are electives, there are a lot of athletics classes, um, there's a CTE class, there's, there's a, there's a pretty wide, wide array of, array, see, I said array?
You did array, I don't understand those very well.
A wide array of classes that our auditors feel comfortable with us doing that, and uh, that's per the new law, that's per CDE, that's per the management advisory, that's per everybody that we know, um, I've seen that.
I'm sorry to talk so much, again, we, this has been the topic of conversation, and there's a whole, every time, uh, thank you very much, Gina, that was a great question. I, sorry, I didn't say that earlier. There's another wrinkle to this whole thing when you're looking at, from our auditor, when you're looking at seventh period offerings, it cannot be classes that you have to qualify into, right? So offering only athletic classes in seventh period where you have to try out for a team is not allowed. That would not be, uh, in line with an instructional and, uh, institutional instructional minute because not everybody can take that class. So what you, what you see when you see the link is, we have a, a wide array of classes that are going to appeal to, uh, as many students as we can think. It is entirely possible, as I said a few minutes ago, that a whole bunch of kids are going to want to say, I want seventh period. It is entirely possible that a whole bunch of kids are going to say, nope, I want to bounce when I can. We don't know. That, so when we're looking at all of this next year. I want to bounce when I can. We don't know. That, so when we're looking at all of this next year, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at an awful lot of adjustment, and we don't know at all what's gonna happen with zero period.
So is it more or less next year, I guess is the question?
It's more.
If that includes seventh period in the overage?
Correct.
And last year, were we counting passing periods like this year?
Always.
And were we counting any optional periods like we are this year? No, right? That's the difference? Right. And so, so that's, that's the main difference.
This, when you say last year, this current year?
Right, yes, yes, this current year.
So I had a question, sorry. You were just, I had a few questions, but you were just talking about, we really don't know about seventh period, and you had a slide there. It was just teacher beginning and end of day preferences.
The two circles.
Because I also read that language in the management, because we asked some questions along the way as this was going on, and you guys, somebody, I don't remember who, there's been a lot of email. And, and thank you, by the way, very much for answering all of our questions as we've gone through, as we've gotten some updates about this. I'm talking about that you need to have this offering, this, this breadth of offering for students, and it needs to have, can't just be for gifted students or athletes, or low, students who need more assistance. It has to be a wide variety. So I guess my question is, did you ask the students what they, you know, whether they want to take seventh period, because you don't...
Literally, that's what we're doing right now with the course offerings piece, is, is do they want a seventh period class?
So I saw that document.
But not, but not what do they want to take, just do they want to take?
Right. So I, I sent that document to Ragani, because as a parent, I, I, I did see that document on Sunday night. I have a student who's registering for classes, because I didn't know. I was like, oh, they know what classes are being offered. I know that it could change, it says it's subject to change, but how did you, you know, how did you, because I heard you say that you're concerned, we don't know how many are gonna request seventh, but you already have some...
Scroll down a little bit.
Seventh period offerings, and it says there in pink, that if you don't see a course that you want, tell your counselor that you wish for an alternate class during your one-on-one meeting. And I, I guess I'm just concerned that our kids, this is all very new for students and families, this process, and this idea that you could say, oh, this is, there isn't what I want here, or what I need. And then the other thing would be, is students might want to pick a seventh period if there is these, there are conflicts, right? When they get their schedule, and someone says, well, these three classes are offered in these two periods, and now what? And so I was looking, so I was thinking about that, and I was looking at your bullet points on that ending slide about what we're doing in terms of how this is going. And I didn't see like this adjustment, or how we're tracking, you know, did, you know, 600 more kids than we have room for here in seventh period, you know, say that they want to take something different, or that they need something? And then what about that second set of kids who may need seventh period after they realize that their schedule isn't gonna work in one through six, and that they, I don't know if they have the right, I understand they don't have the right to take a specific course, but they might have, right, that I would take seventh if I know that it's gonna figure out, help me figure out this conflict, and I can take everything I want to take. And so this piece is messy for me in my mind, and I am wondering how we're tracking. You know, it sounds to tell your counselor in a one-to-one meeting, it's very anecdotal. Are we using a Google sheet? Like, how, how will this work? Because I'm also concerned for audit purposes, if they say that we need to have, you know, this, we need to provide this, and we don't have a good record. I don't know, I don't know how audits would work exactly, so.
The, the letter from the auditor said that it's so nebulous from the CDE, that as long as we have this type of offering, that we're okay. And there has to be a starting point. So you can't list, we all know this, right? Like, you can't put every class. But what you can do is, you can put two different kinds of classes. I can tell you, as a former high school principal, I think this is good, because you have classes where you, there's some classes where there's many sections. So English one, you got sections all throughout the day, right? But then you also have here, like AP Music Theory, Drawing and Painting, where a child may go, you know what, I really, really, really want to be in Drawing and Painting, and I don't know if I can get it in the other blocks, so why don't I just take it then, right? And then I've got it out of the way, it's period seven, and I know I can take my, my solids, my core classes, you know, the rest of the day, that, you know, that type of a thing, if I'm not an athlete, right? But if I'm an athlete, I'd likely take this class some other time, but I'd be in athletics anyway, so I wouldn't be taking a period seven class. So I think what I see here is, is a best effort to get a starting point. And then from there, you guys can work from there, either work forward or work backward, or however you're gonna work. At least that's just my high school principal brain looking at this sheet. So I don't know, Mr. McClanahan, am I way off, or am I pretty close?
Yeah, no, and I, and I heard that too, and I think, I think, and I, and I would agree with Denise's point is, I think what we would like to see as a board is really just tracking, and, and then a reporting back of, because I do anticipate that could happen, is that it's, it's so hard to know as a student, whether you're gonna want that seventh period, unless you know you're an athlete, right? And you're gonna take a particular sport, because you don't know what schedule conflict's gonna arise until you get your schedule. And so, you know, there are those kind of two categories, and I think you put it very succinctly, and is there a way to, you know, is there a process in place where the counselors are going to track it and then report it on a document, and then, and then, you know, that that way can be shared with administration, and then also can, that data can be shared back with us as these course requests and these scheduling issues are being resolved? Because we, I think the goal here is really just to, I mean, we realize that we can't have a perfect schedule for everybody, we realize that. But I think the goal is to really try and meet the, the needs of our students as best as we can. And this seventh period is sort of a wild card, because it's optional, and, and, right? And so how are we going to not just meet it in, on paper, in terms of instructional minutes, but really in meeting the needs of our students? I think that, I think that's the point.
Yeah, we can, we'll work with the high school, and we'll get that data, and we'll share it, we can share it through our internal communications with the board, so you guys can see it, and you guys can kind of see how it's going.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have that before, well, I don't know, when would you, when? I guess before the end of the, well, just because we're doing the budget and the LPO.
It would be June. It would be June.
In May. I guess, I guess, because the, the part that confused me when I saw this document as a parent was, because I keep hearing you say that, that, that periods one through seven is a contractual day. So do I understand correctly that the teachers who are working, a, a full-time teacher, I know there are maybe some teachers or staff who, who don't have a...
There's some part-time teachers, but yeah.
So just, that they, they are there on campus from one through seven?
Yes.
So why then would you have a set thing? I understand why you have zero, because that is only who's willing to, 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 to provide that. But the, this confused me as a parent. I was like, why wouldn't you just see what everybody's, well, okay, because you have, you're saying the kid gets to decide?
Correct. So there's a reason, and I haven't run for public office, and it's because I'm, I'm just gonna speak directly, right? You said that this is, that this is a little messy, and a little confusing, and a little bit nebulous, and I agree. This is gonna be, this is gonna be messy. We're gonna have to, to figure out whether or not students want to take a seventh period. We had to start with something, because part of what the auditors have said is, you may have to make offerings of classes, and this is, and if you go back to one of the earlier slides I put up, was, we asked teachers, do you want to teach a seventh period class? And that's where we want to start, because yes, we want to meet all of our student needs, but we also have teachers who, who we want to make sure that they're teaching, if they want to teach at the end of the day like that, we want to, we want to honor that as well. So we're trying to balance those two pieces, and this is where we're starting with that. If it comes back, and we were way off, then we'll adjust. I can, I, I can tell you that it's really hard to compare schools, right? We did base this off of another high school. Their seventh period acceptances, the, the number of students enrolled in their seventh period classes, was not huge, right? They, they didn't have a lot of students. We anticipate, as a guess, these are gonna be, these are gonna be full. We think kids are gonna want to take seventh period classes. We have no idea what that's gonna do to zero period, because if you look back at the data, it says one of the things that everybody was most concerned about was teachers, students being really tired at the end of the day. A lot of this, because teachers, students are taking zero period, and then taking the full day, and going, it's a long day. So we don't, we don't know. I think that, you know, if you ask me that a year from now, then we're gonna have a much better sense of what it is that our community wants. This, these next few months are gonna be a lot of, a lot of looking at the, at the information that we've gotten and rebuilding stuff. And Ragani, you had something?
I was, I was actually gonna say, no, I was gonna say, Newbury Park High School is a little bit different than us, right?
Different school.
They have, I mean, every school's different. They not only have an array of AP classes like we have, they also have the IB program. And so by, by virtue of having those two programs, having been the former assistant principal there 25 years ago, I would say that that probably is why their seventh period enrollment is a little bit lower, because those classes are typically offered earlier in the day. So that would be my suggestion. But we have worked very closely with Principal Steve LaPierre at Newbury Park High School on this, and it's an open phone line between Matt and Steve, and, and of course, Dr. Rice will be working with us a lot on this, on this aspect too. We have a...
We have a scheduled meeting with him already to kind of go through this when we get some of the course requests.
The other question I had about seventh period, it seems like this is a big shift for the athletics for teams and the athletics department. And I'm, I know you listed at the beginning that you talked to everybody and voted and all of those things, but I was just curious, what has been their concerns? I mean, does this mean they're now practicing, they're not gonna have a block of time and practicing every other day, but they're practicing every day in seventh period for only a shorter amount of time? I mean, I just don't know, have they been well upset about it?
Oh, no. So, okay, that's a good question. If they're on a sports team, they don't have to stop at the end of seventh period. So they, that, that's just the concern, they can keep going with their, with their classes, or their, with their practices. We're gonna have a handful, we have a couple of teachers who are, who are on-campus coaches, who, given the restrictions that we have with our facilities, will be able to put their, their class, or their athletic practices in the one through six periods. So that, that will, then they'll be done at the end of that block, and then those classes, those sports will be limited, they'll stop at that time, because then it'll go on to support time, or to the after-school, to the other levels, right, to JV or froshoff or whatever, so that, because we just don't have enough gym space or, or field space for that. But for everybody else, you know, when they're having their practices, if they want to keep going, they can keep going.
And has the feedback generally been positive from the athletic department on this? My guess is yes, or?
From the athletic department? Yes.
Okay, and, and how do the athletes, the student athletes, do they think that's? How is, I guess, how is this different from this year?
Well, so the, can you go to the, just put the bell schedule up, please? By the way, while we're, while she's doing, I just, I really appreciate your questions. This is a really complicated, difficult issue, and I, I really appreciate all the, yeah, just, just that. So the, what's gone on this year, I don't have this year's schedule with us, and if I were in the classroom sitting, I would walk up and I would point to the screen to show you what I was talking about. But what's going on right now is that, that 325, class goes to 325 every day. That's not athletic class, that's their, that's their classes. So then, they can't start practice until after that. And what that also means is, one of the other data points that you saw was, one of the problems that we've been having, that we didn't anticipate with this year's schedule, was how, we didn't fully anticipate, was how much it was gonna be difficult when students are missing class because of events that they're doing. In this case now, if they leave early, then they're gonna be largely missing their athletic class, right? So it actually will cut down the number of minutes that people are missing from their other classes, right? And that's a big deal. It will also push up the practice time for many of these classes. So for families and for students both, it should be a net positive in this regard. So, thank you, it's a great question.
I'm just going, backing off of Trustee Hardy's comment, and I think we've said this several times, it's, it's hard to know what's changed, because we don't have a baseline comparison, right? So I think for future presentations, if we can just see what has changed, because it also helps us speak to the community when they have questions too, like, actually, on the whole, it looks like things are improving. Like, we have some really great offerings here for seventh, and I would just love to be able to call these things out relative to what was there before. I think it's helpful to have these talking points as us, you know, as board members. And I think you're getting a lot of these questions now too, you know, frankly, I'll, I'll be very honest, it's coming a little late for us as a board too, because, you know, we are getting questions, this course advisement's already happening, and I had no idea that this was already kind of all in place. It's great, I know there's been a lot of work behind it, but keep in mind that we're seeing this kind of for the first time over the last week with a whole bunch of questions coming through via email. And I know that something that we've tried to do, at least with our staff, is really try to get the communications to them first, to front-load, so they're not surprised. I would really appreciate the same courtesy, I think, back to the board, so that, you know, we are also informed and front-loaded, and hopefully we can then address any community members' questions, and then not have to pummel you with a bunch of questions too at the backend. I think to the extent that we can also be front-loaded with these really large endeavors going forward, I know this has been such a topic of conversation. You know, how many hours have we spent in previous board meetings last year? We all had our concerns about that schedule, and we moved forward, and lo and behold, shocker, you know, all those concerns came to fruition, and now we are here. So I, I think this was definitely a point of interest for us, so, you know, in the, in the future, I would just really love to have, if we're having shifts like this, baseline comparisons, so we can just quickly point to like, all the improvements, all the great work that's already been done, and then also just so we're a little bit more informed on the backend.
Yeah, what, what, what happened with this is, we had a glitch, and it was a minutes glitch. And between the district office, Mr. McClanahan, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Mesky, and our auditor, we're trying to figure out the glitch, and it delayed us about a week and a half. And until, because sometimes the auditor gets right back to us, sometimes they don't, sometimes they have to look it up, and, you know, remember, they're dealing with a lot of different districts, so apologize for the delay on that, but it was one of those weird delays, where we, we didn't want to do anything until we knew it was for sure at least minimum 64,800 or more, because we can't have a schedule that's less than that, right? So we had to make sure of that, and, and we will do that from now on, but I, other, other stuff was coming up, like summer school lawsuit, I mean, uh, summer school issues and things like that, so we apologize for that, but there were some reasons for it, so.
Well, I, I really appreciate the, the comparison, that's, it's a great note, and I'll make sure that in the future that you guys can see that as well. It's, I will just tell you, it's, it's difficult for me to always think from, from your lens, because it's literally what I deal with every day, so that, that it's not part of your everyday lives is not entirely apparent to me all the time, but I guess that makes sense. Just in terms of timeline overall though, I, I just want to say, we did have the glitch that Dr. Davis talked about, but we started school in August, we had August, September, in October, we started looking at this saying, okay, you guys have a couple months, what do you think? And they said no. So we went from October, and then into November and December, and we were actually voting on, on options in December. So we, actually, in my opinion, we went as fast as we possibly could, so that we'd get back here after winter break, and, and really start to finalize this. And then we had a little trouble with the, with the calculation on the minutes. That got cleared up, we wanted to make sure that our, then we had to build the offerings that, even the baseline offerings that, that we have there. So I just don't know. I don't know that I could have even... I don't know that I could have even gotten this done in January for you. I just don't see how I could have done that.
I think it's live and learn. I think, you know, we went through it and, and we'll, we'll make sure that we, we get it quicker next time.
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
I think in the meantime, it'd be helpful if we could just see the sheet from last year so then I can just kind of quickly gauge. So the comparable zero six, the zero seven eight offerings.
Oh.
To me, I mean, based on my fuzzy memory, it looks like there's a lot more. And I really appreciate all these staff stepping up to volunteer to teach in a period seven. I see some AP offerings here. I see AP music theory. Is that new?
It's a, yes. Yeah. The, the answer's yes. The short answer is yes. Yes.
Is that something that we need to approve at some point or it's already been historically approved?
Okay.
All right. Well, it's a very exciting development, so.
And I think, I think, well, and what I was gonna say, I think it's a huge credit to Mr. Porquez and, and everybody that's involved in music here at the high school and the administration. Because I know that several years ago, we didn't even have a marching band, right? Like, I knew, it was unbelievably different than most high schools. And now we have this thriving music program that grows every year along with other things we're doing, like adding aquatics, you know, swimming and water pull and things like that. So I think everything we're trying to do is just try to put everything out there for kids to be connected some way to school in any way possible. And AP music theory being brought out of the catalog to actually be taught is a really, really big thing. So I agree with Trustee Wang on that. It's a big deal. So thank you.
And I, and I totally agree with you. I definitely understand how, you know, we had a bell schedule that's worked for so long and then this new law just really threw everything into a wrench and we're changing it again. And it's going to be messy. But I do think that it's still possible to try and anticipate as much as we can and to try and mitigate those anticipated issues. So one that came to mind for me, and I just wanted to mention it before I forget it, is the impact of now OPEF not offering summer school, which was offered on our school schedule versus the summer schools that they'll be taking that will be offered on a later schedule. And how the delayed receipt of those transcripts might impact, right? So are the counselors prepared for that? So these kinds of things that we can anticipate and work towards troubleshooting or having a plan B, assuming these kids don't get the, because they're not getting it from their summer schools. You know, just things like that. So, so just really trying to anticipate as much as we can so that the messiness is smaller, if you will.
I don't know if you have a blood pressure sensor. Yes, I'm, I'm worried about it. So one of the things that we're, we're doing is making sure that, that we pre-approve students to see what classes is that they're taking, to make sure that they are meeting our requirements. That's a process that's gonna be happening in those one-to-ones as well. Getting the information back, I'll just give you another wrinkle, is our schedule is actually a little bit ahead of a lot of other schools. We start a week early, right? So yes, that's gonna be a thing. And there'll be, there will be some shifting, some kids around if we get bad information from what we expected.
Yeah. I, I do, this is a really good point. I do think the default pass.
Yep.
That helps a billion percent. I've had conversa, I just happened to have a conversation, went to Alternative Ed Showcase at the Thousand Oaks Library about a month ago. And River Oaks Academy was there. And I don't know if he was Mr. McGugan's counselor at Newbury Park, Newbury Park High School in the early 90s, but Mr. Richard Indelcoffer was there. And he is retiring from River Oaks. But Moira Fagan Simpson, who is our John and the Spot counselor that we bring on here at Oak Park High, is the new counselor at River Oaks. So River Oaks is one of the WASC accredited summer school options. And they have actually put in their flyer that they gave out to everybody signing up their summer school that, you know, Oak Park Unified begins August the 8th. We have to have their final grades in by this date so we can send it to Oak Park High School by this date. So that was really cool. And then Mr. McGugan and I are having ongoing discussions with the people, with one person, one of the directors at Canal Valley High School. And we haven't gotten to that point yet, but that'll be the next point we get to because we know a lot of our students will probably take that summer program, right? One of the programs they're offering. So anyway, and Ms. Herzog has spoken to Simi Valley about their program. So we're trying to make everybody aware that we start really early.
Can you zoom in a little?
While you're zooming in, if, you know, to that point too, I just, you know, as everyone's working through the wrinkles, I would just hope there's a little bit of grace extended to the students. And they're probably gonna need a little prompting. And people aren't always gonna remember to request those transcripts from there. I'm sure you'll send out very nice communications and timely communications. But, you know, I think the grace, you know, extended both ways would be great.
No, this is, this, as, as difficult as this been, you know, from my lens, right? In my shoes, this is, this, we know how confusing this is for everybody. This is a sea change. And nobody expects it to go swimmingly the first time out. I think it'll get better as years go on when, when, assuming that we stay with this or some version of this, then we'll be able to better anticipate exactly what it is that people want and what we're gonna offer. If you, if you just wanna take a look, you can actually zoom in a little more maybe. So those are the two biggest chunks of the, of the schedule there. So what you can see on the left is that our third block now ends at 3:25. And so this gets to the seventh period and athletics answer that I gave a few minutes ago. And so this year, everybody is, none, none of the class, the sports classes are meeting, sorry, sports teams, because they're not classes, are meeting until after 3:30, right? 3:25. Next year, right, when, when we have our regular days and not our support time, which will be at 2:45. But on our, our other days, then it'll be, it'll be 2:35 that athletic teams will be able to start prepping their field, getting their equipment out and starting their practices. So it actually will move up the lived experience, lived time that families will have for, for all of that.
So is support time rostered, but that's also optional?
No.
Oh.
Not rostered, but yes, optional. It'll be, it'll be the same model that we used for 15 years with our old seventh period. I don't wanna say seventh period because, but that's what we called it then. So it'll be, it'll be office hours. It'll be optional office hour time. Support time for students to take tests, to ask teacher questions, to get additional instruction, things like that.
Do you know if in the previous schedule, I guess this must, this would have been two years ago, was the support time counted in the instructional minutes when it was optional?
It was not.
It was not.
But zero period was.
Okay. I, I think, and there were, there were some questions. I, and I, and I know that we've, we've gone to the extra step, which we appreciate, of going to our auditor. I, I do think there are some lingering questions that I have that maybe, maybe worth either one-on-one and also maybe worth just a legal check. Only because if we get this wrong, the consequences are pretty severe, as you said. So, so I think it's worth it. I mean, I, I'm definitely starting to get more comfortable. But because we have that chunk of time, starting from support time to the end of period seven, which is really optional, but, but, but there is a, my sense is, the analysis that we used for period seven is very similar to the analysis that we previously applied to zero period. So I, I'm starting to get more comfortable around that, but it, I, I think it just-
Analysis for offerings, you mean, or for?
Yes.
Okay.
The, kind of the, the legal standard based on the-
The management advisory.
The management advisory. So, so I think, so I think if we, like, if I see, okay, what was previously offered in zero period? And then I, and I, just a quick look of the seventh period offerings, it really does look like a good array of core and elective, and then there's also sports. But yeah, I think, I think that's just for me now, that final, just making sure that the instructional minutes, particularly the counting of support time in seventh period is really pretty tight.
I, I agree completely. And one of the reasons that we, you know, was rightly pointed out that we knew that there was a pretty good chance we're gonna have trouble with this year's schedule. There were gonna be some, we, we knew because we saw what happened at, at other local schools. And we had conversations about what some of the problems might be this year and they've come to fruition. So we were sort of aware of that. The reason, the main reason that we went with the schedule that we have this year is because we could not safely stand on what those seventh period offerings needed to be. There was next to no guidance and it would change every two weeks. And we were not comfortable at all with that. I am very comfortable now with the guidance that we've gotten and, from our auditors and from the state to say that, that the offerings that we have put out, if we, if we had to go back and show, what did you offer to students? I, I believe that the list that we have offered there, it meets any threshold that the state's gonna, gonna require from us. I believe that it is much more robust than I've actually seen other schools who have other optional periods who are offering that. And I think, this is a phrase you can just put in your back pocket, is one of the recommendations that we've had is, we have to be able to make a, make the case about why we offered what it is that we did. And if we have a good faith effort to show this is why we've offered what we did and we believe that it meets the requirements because of this, I will be, will be on safe ground. And I, I commend my team, my counselors and Ms. Smith for putting together the options that they have from the communication they've gotten from the teachers who are, are, as, as you have described, not everybody is, is, oh, this is just gonna be great. You know, there's a lot of questions around how this is gonna go. But they have embraced it because they, as you saw in the voting, they think it's significantly better option than what we did this year.
And then one final follow-up question. Of the, of the schools that you know that are offering this optional seventh period that you've spoken to, are you aware of any that have run into penalties or issues around this?
Not one.
Do I have a question? Regarding the fiscal management advisory that the auditors had quoted, so-
Tina, just, sorry, one thing.
Go ahead.
Not only am I not, I'm not aware that they are aware of anybody. I haven't heard of anybody who's been, who's been, it's not been a thing to my knowledge. Sorry, I didn't mean to catch up.
No problem. So regarding the FMA, so I tried to find this on the CDE website and I couldn't find it. So it's 1986. Can we just find out if it's been enshrined in ed code and that's why the FMA doesn't go? Or is there a site where we can find a comprehensive list of these, you know, fiscal management advisories? I mean, this was very telling and informative, but it was also dated 1986. So I just wanna make sure that there isn't a more recent, you know, legislation that we should be looking at that this has already been memorialized in or if there's another document.
The memo from the state?
Yeah.
I've looked. I haven't seen another one. That is the, and when we asked them to, that's the one that they gave us. And it was technically about that they were applying it to this new law, but it was actually written for, for another purpose about, so these optional periods.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. So I guess for my own purposes as a board member, I'd like to be able to read what other, you know, FMAs are out there and also understand, you know, how they work in terms of timing and with the ed code. And, because if I look on the CDE side, I see some FMAs that relate to summer school tuition and fees. I don't see this one. So if it's already encapsulated in existing legislation, I'd just like to be able to see. I just am a very compliance-oriented person, so if someone can find it or email the CDE to see what's, you know, where do we, where do we go for this?
We've looked far and wide. We're like you. We, there's nothing, we can't, we can't find nothing. I, I think this might be one of those delayed things. I think, you know, they made this law, they expect everybody to follow it. But then they just don't, they don't update anything. They have this nebulous language because I don't think, I think they realize after making the law that oops, this is really, really hard for high schools to follow, really hard for them to comply with. But we could absolutely send us out to our, our legal firm and ask them to look and search because there's, I can't find anything.
Well, if there are other FMAs, I would just like to be able to read them. I think that's the other thing. So if we can't check with another source, just, or even the CDE and email them or just go, hey, is there, you know, a repository of these that we can refer to? I, I didn't find it myself either, so I was a little confused.
Yeah, because the auditors are getting everything from CDE.
Yeah.
So they, like, because our, our auditing firm is one of the largest and they work with so many school districts. And so their, their advice, their advising is going out to all these districts they work with.
Sure. No, I understand. It's just so funny to see something from 1986, right?
I know.
That always is a red flag. And I appreciate, I know that everyone's done their due diligence. It's just more for my information. The second piece is lunch. And I've asked you questions. And there was a, an article in the Talon recently. I think it would be really nice to be able to circle back at some point to the community because that was one of the concerns and impacts about all of the efforts that have been made, I think, to kind of curtail some of the lunch lines, address some of the student concerns that were highlighted in the article. And then people can understand that, you know, hey, we heard you and here are some things that we're doing to make it better for our students.
It's a, it's a, it's a good question. One of the things we've done, one of the, one of the difficulties we've had is that the cafeteria and the service lines that we have were not designed to have the number of students that we have going through. And with the state picking up the tab for lunch, the, the cost of lunch, it's actually increased the number that we have to serve as well. So what we've been doing over the last couple of months, I don't think we've talked to you about it, is there's an, there's another room connected to the gym that's being used as storage. So we've been looking at whether or not we could get that cleaned up to see if that's another service line that we could use. In the meantime, there are some sliding windows on the side next to, next to the main service lines that when we do have the staff, if nobody's ill that day and we have more complicated service, we can divert somewhere between 30 and 50 students to go there to make the lines go a little bit faster.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say too, that it's a really good point. Mrs. Catherine Adams, our director of Food Nutritionist, but we're looking at this for several months along with Mr. McClanahan and his staff. And in fact, Mr. McGugan and Mr. Roush have even come out and looked at it and tried to, you know, look at a different design or a different area and all those types of things. And where we would strategically put supervision, those types of things. And we haven't gone beyond that right now. But I know there's been some, some things we're looking at now as sort of like a pilot type of thing in terms of a third line and things like that that may be looked at.
We actually have a third line that's running during some of the days. The pizza day, pizza Fridays are a difficult day because then everybody shows up. I will say however, that pizza days are not the worst day. They're just the most students. And so then the difficulty becomes getting everybody into line. So that's why we have some additional stanchions and put it out to make the lines a little bit more orderly. The actual difficulty that we have with lunch is what the, when there's complicated serving, when it's multiple, literally multiple spoonings of different food to get onto different plates. Because then each one of them has to wait to get the next one. The pizza's actually really easy because they just break it and they put it on the plate and they go. It's, it's the more complicated food that gets served with multiple steps that slows the line down the most. That's, that's accurate.
I also read the Talon article. And so what I did, I surveyed several high schools in the, in the area. And our minutes are right in line with a lot of them. We, we have more than some and less than others and, but it's, it's really close. I think the average is maybe one minute off and, or maybe two. I can't remember. It's either 36 or 37, but it's really close. And so I think it's more of a use of resources in terms of human resources, people, personnel. And so I think it's more of a use of resources in terms of human resources, people, personnel that can make this, kind of like what Rodney is hitting on. It's, it's, it's more of strategically placing people, like I said before, on those days that Mr. McLennan is talking about, when the serving instead of taking five seconds, takes 20 seconds. And and that is a big deal because in 20 sec, you know, in, in, you know, 20 seconds, three students, that's a minute, right? But if it's five seconds, that's a lot faster, right? So I think that's really comes down to people and how we can strategically place people. And if we have to do some things with human resources, we will. If we have to add somebody, we will, you know, that kind of stuff. It's important enough for Tess to speak now.
Yeah, I was actually gonna point out for those kinds of lunches, what I've realized is when I line up for the lunches, what the workers will do is they'll have like 10 different bowls out and then they'll put carrots in every single one and then spinach in every single one and then like chicken in every single one. And I think like this doing that makes the line go a lot slower rather than having a person do carrots, a person do chicken and like spinach. Because it holds everyone pushing in from the entrance. Is this what I've kind of noticed?
I hear you. I think that assembly lines would disagree that specialization is actually is faster. So that way you don't have to change. So I I hear you. It's just that those are, those are complicated serving and 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 some of it, we actually have been for a big chunk of the year, we've been minus a person in the, in the, in the serving line. So, but they, yeah, we can count, we can time them. Literally, that's what they did in the industrial revolution. So we can do that.
Thank you for the feedback, Tess. I really appreciate that. Yeah, it's important to have the student feedback and I really appreciated the Talon article too. Sometimes a lot of decisions are made and we don't always know the site impacts and, you know, what a student's going through during the day. So I appreciate all the efforts that are being made. The other question this led me to remind, reminded me of was clubs. Are they all meeting during lunch as well?
Most of them.
Or some in seventh or?
Most of them during lunchtime. Yeah, yeah. By the way, I I brought Andrew in and had a long conversation with him about lunch.
Oh, great. I appreciate that follow up.
He's, he's a phenomenal, oh, I'm on record. He's a great kid. Really, really impressive young man. Just saying.
Absolutely. And so I really enjoyed his article and among his other articles.
Yep. I had the exact same conversation with him, so.
I got a little weepy reading his articles, so.
You saw it earlier tonight, you know, I've been here about a year and a half and I I think it's, you know, we've got two new board members and I I think it's, I cannot state, I cannot overstate how wonderful the students at Oak Park High are. It is shocking every single day. And I've worked at high performing schools. I, I know good students. These kids are off the charts and our teachers get the best out of them. So this is, there's some really great things. We're dealing with a whole lot of changes and a whole lot of very complex issues. And I really appreciate everybody's care in in trying to to support our families to the best of our ability. But behind all of that is just some amazing kids.
I really appreciate that. And I think, you know, it's great that you're doing that. It's just, I think, again, it's closing that feedback loop, I think, that we've historically talked about. It's just, I think there's a lot going on behind the scenes. Not everybody watches these board meetings. It's not high on everyone's priority list. And Rodney does a great job, I think, in capturing everything in the Oak Park Weekly. But I think for the things that we've kind of repeatedly heard about, I think it would be really nice to kind of highlight the good work that's already been doing, you know, happening. And remind families too, that these are state mandates that have been pushed down right after COVID that we're all dealing with on top of other future endeavors that we're working on. And I feel like we just don't even have a moment to kind of catch up and catch our breath and kind of get back to normal and reset. And I just really applaud all of you, our district leadership, for really doing the best that they can. And ultimately, I think, you know, I think about the bell schedule questions and all the comments. We just want to know that our students' requests and that we have data that we can track it, that we understand what the needs of our student population is and how we can best support those efforts and support our staff to support them. So that ultimately is the goal of all of these questions. And I think that data and tracking and kind of historical data, I don't know if that's already being done, you know, year to year, you know, what the course, you know, requests are and then what's actually able to be filled. I don't know. I like looking at historical data. I'm just a budget analyst. So it's just something that it's always nice to see to be able to frame out future actions and help guide limited resources that we have effectively.
And then, and then one final comment from me is, so appreciate you taking the time to, you know, listen to, address, answer all of our questions. You know, as, as you mentioned, we're sort of digesting all of this for the first time. You and your staff have been leaving. So I think that's a lot of it, which is we're just for the first time getting our heads around this. But also because when the course of selection process started, we also started to get questions from, 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 you know, the community. And so, so, you know, the first comment is as much as, and I, you know, Ms. Wang alluded to this, as, as changes or decisions start to come down the pike, as much as, you know, because then these board meetings only happen once a month, i- if there's some way that we can be sort of front loaded so that we can, we were armed with that information that we can address some of those questions. I mean, some of it may just have to be, you need to refer back to your site or your counselor, but there are these kind of more programmatic or structural questions, I think, that that if we, if we, you know, to the extent you can and your staff can front load us, that that would be super helpful. And I think it will just kind of help allay and and kind of prevent something that could well up into a bunch of like, what's, what's, what's going on and why to. Abe, if if all of us can help address those questions because we're front loaded, I think that would be the benefit. The other thing is I I do see a lot of potential in this schedule because one, as you mentioned, you know, at least 60% of our students participate in a sport. And so those 60% couldn't even start their practices until 3:30 and now, you know, they can start much earlier. And, you know, yes, there's the short lunch, but if, you know, a lot of these students then can get out early because they don't need the support time or they don't have the seventh period, that just then shortens the week and the day and they have time to do other things. So I do see a lot of potential and I do really hope that we can, you know, if we take those steps to really try and, you know, find out what our students need and address as much of what what their needs are and their requests are, I think that this really does have a lot of potential. So I just want to close out with that comment.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions or comments that you want? We've been talking a lot.
I just want to say thank you for also for the, the graphics on, on input from staff and students and families. I appreciate that the effort was made and it's, it's informative for me as well, just seeing how how these different schedules are received and what the reaction is and what's driving this as well. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
This was great. It's a little overwhelming. It reminds me, you're trying to roll out a new car and you got the production line going and you sure hope the market, you know, likes the car. And I don't know if there's any way to test market this, that is to hand a sample size of students, 30, 40 students, okay. What would you pick? And find out that, oh my goodness, they're all gravitating to one part of the schedule or doing whatever might go wrong. I can anticipate because I don't understand it well enough. But, you know, if there's any way to test, take a test run at this with a group of students, maybe that would surface some issues.
I don't think we're gonna have time for that, but we will know here pretty soon, right? Because course requests are going out right now. We purposely did not, this is a joke. We purposely did not name this after any family members. This will not be an Edsel, right? We'll, we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to, as we've just discussed, is to, to continue to make this one of the elite high schools in the state and offer everything that our families and our students want.
I'm just, my high school experience is so long ago that we had, we had no course selections.
No, you just went to class.
You got in line.
Yeah.
Lines were what we did.
Yeah, I agree. I, me too.
You're running a community college. Congratulations.
As I leave, thank you for all the visits you guys have done. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I just kind of wanted to circle back because one of the, the, I don't want to say criticism, but one of the issues for us as a board is, you know, that we are clear with, with the direction as a whole, right? Because I know what you want or you want or you want. So I just wanted to circle back and make sure that, that everybody felt comfortable and understood what, what we were after. So one of the things that I know I wanted as far as data, I know you, you had mentioned some things as well, Tina, was the number, you know, based on this document that the students are using the zero and seventh period and eighth period options, they're going to be telling their counselors and they're going to be taking away their preloaded free seventh. So that data seems like it would be a data point you would have, right? The number of students who asked for a seventh period that weren't, wasn't offered, right? You'll know that.
The number of students who are interested in a seventh period but didn't want one of those.
And then what happened to those students?
Correct.
Did they take a seventh? Did they not? That's one data point I would be interested in so that we know we've got a need, we're not, whatever.
Yep. Great question.
And then, and you had articulated some things that I don't want to speak for you, so I want to be, just want to be clear.
I think just comparative data, right? So we have the first ask of what the kids are putting in right now through Q. I'd like to see that first slide. Second slide would be after they meet with their counselors. I'm assuming this is easy, by the way, because it's all through the SIS, through Q. But if it turns out to be cumbersome, let me know. But I would imagine that as a site leader, you'd want to track this historical data. Over time, it also helps inform, you know, our HR department as far as staffing needs and, you know, basically where our population is at in terms of student demand. So just kind of looking for comparative data, right? So if you have that data from last year, that's even better. If you don't, then, you know, we're starting afresh. That's fine. But just looking at what we can generate in terms of reports and then seeing how things play out, I guess, over time and I don't know. I'm assuming that with this training that things will go better in terms of, you know, mitigating, you know, scheduling conflicts and disruption to the classrooms during those first couple of weeks where kids are kind of shifting in and out. But I think just looking at that Q data so we know, hey, we have so many kids that want this class. And then looking to see where we land, right? And what was unfilled? Like where did we have to, how many kids didn't get the class that they wanted due to the class just being full? And they got redirected maybe to a second or third choice. I think the other thing that we saw and I really want to see, you know, to the extent possible, is we're not derailing students from their trajectories, right? Like with languages, for example, like sometimes it's, there's a conflict, you know, if they have a sport like softball or, and then all of a sudden it's like you have a language and you're kind of derailing them from the path that maybe they need for their future career. You know, hopefully we're offering options for students as well.
Well, yeah, it's a really good point. I think it's a good reminder that if we, we have a policy here that if a student can't fit a course into their schedule because of, of those kinds of things, that they can take it elsewhere from a lost credited program. And or, and or if we don't offer a course that they're interested in. So I just wanted to put that out there too, because we do have that policy in place here in our school.
I just want to make sure that that's understood, especially in terms of advice that's being given. I've heard conflicting stories sometimes where, because we have that other policy, it's like if Oak Park offers it, then you're not allowed to take that class outside. But if it's through no fault of their own and it's just due to the master scheduling and they want to retain their athletic status or whatever, you know, I would hope that we have a do no harm policy and would allow for that exception in that case. Is that a yes, Mr. McLennan?
Sorry, yes. I'm nodding over here. Yeah, we, it's not a common occurrence. The, you actually listed a couple of things like language, especially more, the more advanced language classes. Those are, those are one offs. One of the slides that I had up there talked about singletons. And in a school our size, the ability to offer a comprehensive program, that's at a certain, at certain junctures, there are going to be limitations on how many of those sections you can offer. And every year, we're going to have a couple of students who say want to be in jazz band and take, you know, AP Spanish and we just have two sections and they, and they happen to meet at the same, there's nowhere else to put them. So that does occur on occasion. Again, this is only my second year here. It's happened like maybe twice since I've been here, but, but it is.
I guess the other purpose of having that data then would be to identify, are we having an increase in rise of those singleton requests? Like how are we capturing, right? To know that had we offered this, maybe we have multi talented students as we know, right? If there's a trend, then we'd be able to spot it by looking at that data. I think that's the other point of having data tracking and looking. And it's great that we're accommodating that. I just want to make sure there's uniform guidance there that, again, most families that I know, they just want to take their classes here at Oak Park. And why wouldn't they? We have the best teachers, right? But on this chance where you have someone who happens to be an athlete and, you know, they don't want to give one or the other up because, you know, for obvious reasons, right? It's just more attractive if you're applying for college. I would hope that we have this uniform understanding amongst, you know, the course advisement process and counselors that there is that exception available in that area.
Yeah.
I just, superintendent, I want to thank you and your team for all the time and effort you've put into this. You know, you know, I know how much time you guys have put into this. It's just unbelievable. And I, for one, really appreciate the surveying of the educational partners, beginning with our, our, our students and teachers and, and our parents. I think that's really, really important. And, I think we're good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan. Thank you. Um, okay. Okay, we're on to five. This is, I'm sorry, do you need a break? We're on to item five, consent agenda. Tess, do you have a preferential vote before the board votes? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Now we're on to item six, under Educational Services, 6.1, approve the 2223 Safe School Plans.
Is Mr. Benioff coming on the? Mrs. Agarwal, is Mr. Benioff coming on? Okay, thank you. Hello, Mr. Benioff?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I, I, I didn't, I couldn't, couldn't tell. Okay, good, good evening. The, the safety plans are an annual submission to the, to the school board and eventually county and state that every school site and school building has to have a comprehensive safety plan. And the process of this really starts over, over each summer because obviously every school has turnover in staffing, sometimes facilities. And the, the overall needs of, of campus safety, you know, new, new information changes year to year. And then during, during the course of the, the, the drills, the emergency disaster drills that, that we do, the fire drills, the earthquake and active assailant drills, lockdowns, things like that. There, there's always a process of not, not just doing those drills, but then taking the survey after for, for staff and identifying any holes or needs or improvements. And all of those things get built into the development of, of the, the, the safety plans. This past year, coming, coming out of the, you know, return from COVID closures and things like that, obviously there's been a lot of focus on campus safety, particularly with the, the occurrences of, of active assailants around the country. Unfortunately, and we, not, not just this district, but our, our entire county has really taken on a, a, a focus to kind of redevelop it. What, what are the components of these safety plans? Making sure that just kind of all aspects are, are looked at and, and taken into consideration. And I, I think the board has, has known, I'm not sure the public necessarily, that we have joined the county and our self-funding authority or at-risk insurance corporation that there's been a series of, of seminars that has been put on the prevention of violence at the county. that has been put on, the prevention of violence at the county. And they've been, you know, ve- very, very huge attended seminars. All the districts have sent teams to, to take a look at the different aspects of how do we prevent violence on our campuses and, and in our communities. And one of the first things that the, the seminars back in September and October really looked at, and these, these seminars are put on by former FBI secrets, the Secret Service, actually Active Secret Service, and sheriffs corporate, sheriffs organizations. And the, the very first thing that they started with was having, you know, new checklists and surveys for sites to take a look at for their safety plans. And in, in doing so, again, this is, we've had the safety plans, the update, this process always going on annually. We did identify that there were a number of things that were missing from our, our, our checklists and our, our safety plans from, from the past. And so I met with Michelle Kelly, who's part of the VC SSFA, the, the self-funding authority. And we developed a, a template for all of our schools, kind of a redevelopment of, you know, what we had in the past, but what, what are the required components for the, these safety plans? So it's been a bit of a new process, new template, new format for our sites to take a hold of, but we tried to make something as easy as possible. There's a lot of components that are district requirements, and there's, in these plans, there's, there's district policies listed. But then there's the site specific plans, things, things specific to things such as dress code, to, to, you know, the, the, the maps and the, the evacuation plans that, that take place. There were a few new things that, that had to be added to our plans that we did not have in the past. And, and particularly, the, the emergency operation plans, the, the EOPs, more of the alphabet soup. But the EOPs are, you know, the specific plans for if there is an active assailant, goodness forbid, but if, if there is, you know, what, what is the training that's required? What do we do? What, you know, what routes do we take? What lockdown procedures? All of these types of things that we've been really retaking a look at and even providing training for the, this, this year. And we, we, the, the, these, believe it or not, some of those, those specifics were not part of the, the old comprehensive safety plans. So, again, I, I think probably one of the best examples is the suggestion that every site have not only evacuation plans for like onsite and in, say, an earthquake or something, but if students had to extend and be running away from the campus or evacuating the campus itself, where are some identified rally points that they would know to go to that might be safe? For example, across the street from the high school, or just down the street from, from Brookside or Media Creek is a fire station. Identifying where they, they might go. It's going to be different for every site. And so the, the, every site works with their teams to create their specific emergency plans. So we, th- this, this is a bit of a new format. It really is, for the most part, the same, same items, but we've tried to make it more streamlined overall for the sites to, to develop year after year. And then as they make changes, that, that they'll be able to plug those, those in much easier year to year. It's been, again, a more extensive process, just because we've added, added some aspects. We've tried to consolidate and make things that you can see on, I think most of them are on page two of, of each of the plans, the table of contents. And, and those have to be the, the same across the board and, and meet the requirements that, that, that we have to have for these plans. And I will also say that even with these, even with these table of contents, as we're looking forward, we are doing a whole lot of other things that I, I know I was actually supposed to present tonight, and I apologize, it could not be there in person to do the presentation. But overall, in our safety updates, what we've done this year, and how we've, thank you, Ragani, how we have looked at other aspects and other plans that are going to actually be adding to this table of contents. Things like emergency plans for athletic and activity events. We do have those things, but to really formalize and have those available to, to each of the sites. Things, the, the protocols to have for field trips, for example. And again, we have these things in place. These just have not been added to the comprehensive plans as, as of yet. Our counseling wellness initiatives, and particularly our wellness centers, and what's going to be developed with our, with student assistance programs, our multi-tiered support systems, how we identify stu- students who need more support or interventions. These are things that are going to need to be part of our comprehensive plans going forward as well. And then the last few things that the seminars, the, the sessions have focused on how to create threat assessment teams at each school site. So in, in, in the case of a, a student who's identifying as, as really at risk, or maybe has, has a potential of imminent danger to themselves or to others, we have a process, we have a threat assessment process that we go through. But the idea is how can we even earlier identify and intervene with, with these students? And this has really been one of the main pushes of, of these, these seminars. And I think I've, we've mentioned it before, that, you know, a- all the hardening of schools, the, the, the different safety measures of that, that you see, you know, we've talked a lot about different fencing ideas, or the door locks, or all, all of these things of hardening schools. The number one thing that they, that, that the Secret Service identifies, the FBI identifies, that we can do is to identify early at-risk behaviors and intervene with students. And that we hopefully never find out or deal with the, the, the actions of somebody who's, who's going to harm themselves or others. And so there's, there's ways to create and expand what we do with our threat assessment processes. And that's part of what we're going to be developing. We're starting now and developing even into the summer. And this, these are other things that will also be added to our plans more than what's just required. We're trying to make these, you know, kind of, the word comprehensive should mean comprehensive. And so we're, we're trying to develop all these things that have kind of come down the pike now, to, to include. But for, for these, we, we just, these look different, a little bit different than the past. Hopefully, they are much more uniform. We've tried to make it much more streamlined, uniform and readable for, for the schools, for the public. I will say, there's a couple of things, because we also want to make these, these plans public. We do have hard copies once the board has approved them. We, we make them available at, at the school offices and, and, you know, hard copies if people want to. We will also be posting them. But I will say that there are aspects that we will not be posting publicly. For example, on the emergency operation plans, we don't want to put out maps of where we might extend and evacuate to, or, you know, what, what, we don't want somebody who might be an active assailant to have information to, to plan and, and use our plans against us. So there's some strategic omissions that we would put out publicly, but we do have available at the, at the school sites and, and the staffs would, would have that information. But that, that's just one aspect that we've, we've taken a look at as, as we want to have this, again, more, more people aware of these plans. What are the aspects and, and what, what each school has, school site has for their plans? So that's kind of a, overall, a little background, what's happened this year and, and what we're going to be continuing to work on going forward.
Hey, Brad, thank you so much for that. I just wanted to step in really quick. I wanted to thank Brad for all the work he's done, this school, actually, starting last summer in this school year. I also want to thank Commander, retired Commander Randy Pentes for the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. He and Brad have worked hand in hand this school year, doing trainings all across the school year. But it all started with a, I asked Brad and Commander Pentes to do a district-wide safety report, you know, pretty much look, review, look at the entire school district, look at every single site, whatever. So Brendan Callahan, our director of MNO and many other things, Brad Benioff, Commander Pentes, and a, and a whole team of people, you know, Adam and different people have gone out and they've, they've looked at every single school site. They looked at every single classroom. They looked at every fence. They've looked at everything. I've joined them on a couple of these. Mr. McGugan has joined on a couple of these. This is, was a very, very, very thorough look. We hadn't had that in the district for about five or six years. We had a very good report written about five or six years ago from our former consultant. And Commander Pentes reviewed it, thought it was great, but we needed to take, you know, fresh eyes and look at it. And we found some things. And one of the things we found was we needed to have some other way for ingress egress or lockdowns in our classrooms and our offices. And so we went out and purchased lock blocks. And so every one of our classrooms now have lock blocks. And they are getting very positive reviews from people across the district, just like they did when I was in Conejo, and just like they did in Moore Park when Mr. Roush and Ms. Herzog were in Moore Park. So a very, very school-friendly, but very safe way to keep active assailants out of classrooms and things like that. Something else that, that has happened, you know, throughout his, Commander Pentes has put on these trainings. He's done, he did one wave of trainings where it was basic safety, school safety awareness, talked a lot about layers of protection that Mr. Benioff just referenced. And, you know, you can have all these layers of protection and they're good, they're, they're not bad. But the training and the mindset of people is more important. And so the more training you can have. So now what Commander Pentes has done, he's completed all the run, hide, fight trainings. And that is with every employee in the district. That was his goal at the start of the school year. And now he's working with student groups. And so I know he's worked with at least one of the high school groups. Mr. Benioff knows more than I do about this, but I know he's worked with at least one, and he's going to work his way through other groups. So I just, I just wanted to, to talk about that and to tie that into the safety plans and tie it into the county trainings. Because everything they say at the county trainings is exactly the same as what Commander Pentes has taught everybody here. And I know Mr. Callahan knows, because he goes to all those trainings with us. He's here tonight. But it's really nice to know that exactly what our consultant is saying is exactly what the Secret Service and Homeland Security are saying.
If I can, because Commander Pentes actually, over the years, has, has helped write a lot of the, a, a lot of the plans and, and processes, even, you know, not just for our county. But when I mentioned that the, these, the presentations are with, from sheriff's groups, and he's, he's in the past had input to, to, to all this. So we actually have a resident expert with us. And, and, and I think that what, what you just touched on, Dr. Davis, is, is really important, because the, the idea that we're trying to create that, that Randy wants to do, that we want to do with these, these plans, is to not, not have these things be, you know, one-off trainings. As, to, to quote Randy each time, these are, these are perishable skills. And we, we have not had the trainings for a few years. So it was really important to have these several rounds of, 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 of training specifically. And then, you know, how do we ingrain that into the, the calendar of next year? When, when and where do we have the different trainings just automatically done? So we're not kind of having to redo everything as extensively, but also have these things built into these plans as well.
And the, the other thing I wanted to add in, thank you, Mr. Benioff, is that, you know, our, of our district goals, goal two is all about student and staff safety and well-being. So I think that's really, really important that everybody out there listening knows that everything we're doing is tied directly to one of our four district goals, our, our main four district goals. And so I think that's really important. That's really critical. And, you know, I've had the pleasure as a, as has Mr. Benioff and Mr. McGugan of attending some of these trainings. And I've been very pleased. I've been very excited to hear the questions from our staff members and things like that. And I, I just, I just think we're very, very fortunate to, to be doing the things we're doing with the expertise that we have. Because not every district has this expertise. We're very, very fortunate to have Commander Pentes and have Mr. Benioff and everybody else here on the team working on these things.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Dr. Davis. And I really appreciate all the efforts, I think, that have been taken this year to evaluate all of our sites. I had two questions. This information is great, but how is this information disseminated to our families and our staff?
Well, I, I'd, I'd start with the staff first. I'm, you know, the, again, the, these, these plans or these, the, the, the emergency plans overall, that, that really has always been an ongoing process when the staff, the staff has to know what they're doing in a, just even for the drills. And they have to know what they're telling the kids and guiding the kids and how they do, do any of the drills. And we usually start with, say, like a, a fire drill. And it seems like, okay, that's automatic and easy. But, you know, quite, teachers change, classrooms change, the, the map changes every year for, for, for a principal or the administration to, it's one of the first things that they do in the summer is kind of take a look and say, okay, well, this classroom, this teacher is going to be evacuating here. And that information has to get to the staff. And that's, that's usually part of the, the first staff meetings at the beginning of the year. So the information in, in these plans is, is shared even at the beginning of the year. Usually, to be honest, there's usually a streamlined, usually it's a folder or something that, that, that the, the teachers and the staff are given as a reference that, you know, these are the things that you do, these are the protocols for, for the emergencies. As you can see in, or as what was seen in the, the table of contents, a lot of these things are listed in here are reminder, not just reminders, but they, they are the active board policies that go towards safety. So that, that's where, that also has to be brought forward. It may not be the specific protocols of how you do a drill or what you do in an emergency, but still the reminders of what, what are anti-bullying, what are, what our dress codes are. All of these things are, are, are shared with staff. I do think that it's been a, a difficulty of, of sharing with, with the public in the past. We've always had this, these giant folders. And it's like, okay, if you want to see the emergency plan, you can go in and, and see the, the, the big folder. I think I've had one parent over my career come in to actually ask to look at the, the emergency plan. So part of what we, we heard about, you know, again, we, we wanted to have this more public, with the revisment of, of this, this, this document, we do want to post, post these and have them available. At the same time, the individual sites will have to give specific information out to parents. You've probably already seen all this, you know, you, you, when, when principals give out a, on a newsletter or something and say, we're doing a disaster drill, and these are some of the reminders, you know, I always, I'm sorry, I always default to my, my time at Media, but you know, we always used to say at, Um, you know, I always, I'm sorry, I always default to my, my time at Medea, but you know, we always used to say at um, back to school nights or in our newsletters, you will uh, please make note of where a reunion gate is because here's the, the process of um, if, if we had to evacuate, how we have uh, students uh, reunited with, with their, with their parents at the reunion gates. There's those processes that are shared year after year with, with public. Um, so we actually want to post, have the entirety of the plans posted for um, for the public. Um, but again, the individual sites will have to continue to um, you know, give their specific information that, that parents need to know about uh, their emergency plans.
Thanks for mentioning Medea. Actually, that's exactly what I had in mind because I remember, I think as a new parent, I really appreciated having that communication about where we would go to find our child in case there was an emergency. And obviously now with, you know, the alerts that we have through Parent Square, it could be very tailored, you know, depending on the incident. But I don't remember seeing anything for the high school um, come through as far as, you know, it might be posted somewhere. I'm just not aware um, as to what that process would be. And I know it's unique to each site, but so that's what I'm thinking about right now relative to, you know, what I had at Medea.
Um, and, yeah, it, and, and it, um, I, I think over time, we've, we've had discussions of, you know, can, can we uh, work with, you know, either student groups or, or parents to, to, you know, even produce, you know, short videos, uh, instructional videos of this, this would be the um, the, the process. And the, these are what we, what you might see or what we would ask in, in the case of emergency. Um, I know we've talked about that type of idea bef- before, and obviously that's logistically difficult at times, but I think that, that could be um, effective. But I, I think working through these plans, some of the discussions with the site administrators um, i- i- is just what we're talking about is, is, you know, how will you communicate the specifics of your site to, to the parents if they need to know these aspects? Yeah. Frankly, the kids, when you, when they go through these drills, um, they, they know what the, the processes tend to be. Parents don't. Um, so that, I, I think it is a good point that we want, we want to share all of this um, with, with parents as, as well.
Yes, I am just especially thinking about our parents who might be commuting from the valley, you know, in case there was an emergency. And I know we always handle disaster situations so well with Woolsey and Borderline. It's just something that we're really good at, but I just, you know, it's been a while now since COVID, so it just might be good to kind of revisit those. And just for my own information too, I'd be curious. Thank you.
Brad, um, thank you for, you answered a couple of my questions off the bat um, with regard to integrating that threat assessment team info and incorporating um, the, the counselor's uh, feedback um, into these plans. And I'm wondering if, is there any more information on sort of the timeline for when those would be incor- integrated into these plans?
Well, frankly, frankly, even uh, what, because the, the uh, like we're, we're developing comprehensive counseling plan, um, suicide prevention plan. I'm hoping to have even within this next month to have uh, the drafts of those, those documents um, completed uh, brought, brought forward to um, uh, you know, to, to some of our advisory committees and then to the board. Um, I think even, even as part of the discussion, I guess my intention that a- as soon as we would have those, those aspects, uh, or those, those plans done, um, I would actually want to put those into the, the plans even as they are, even if it's just as this year as a link um, available to what those plans are. Uh, but then going forward into next year, they would become part of the um, table of contents. Um, the threat assessment teams, um, probably that's, that's going to be, I mean, we're, we're starting some of the discussions, but that's probably going to be a, a bit of a summer project. Um, ju- just because it's, it's really going to be writing the protocols and um, in- integrating a few other systems of identification, you know, what, what student rises to the level of, we need to have a threat assessment team, take a look and do an intervention to them. Um, there's a lot of questions to that. One, one of the great things is that the um, uh, the Secret Service uh, ha- has a handbook actually on how to create these uh, these threat assessment teams. And, and so once we kind of create that team by, by site, um, and, and have our specific protocols, that can then be integrated. But I, I think timeline would probably be that, that would be a, a, a summer project to uh, to actually create. Um, there's a few other aspects. Again, I thi- I, I think that we, even though they weren't required here, I think we've seen over time that it would be really helpful to have um, like when, when we go on field trips, there, there's protocols that we have and the, and the forms and the, you know, i- if a child gets hurt, this is what happens. There, you know, just, just having those things a- as part of this, this plan as well. It was not required, but at their, I, I've been identifying different things that I think we just need to keep adding to and making sure we have a- all things available to everybody that, that, that is all, all known.
Thank you. And then one of my other questions was, I noticed across the, the, the plans, which are obviously site-specific to an extent, but some of them, kind of like in section four with appropriate programs and strategies that provide school safety, some of them had a really extensive description of, of their strategies and some were sort of bullet points. And um, that's not a, a criticism, but it would be uh, I'd be interested to know if the district can provide sort of guidelines on, for example, you know, what we'd want to see and, and what kinds of things we include under the safety umbrella. Um, so that, that the, the councils and the uh, the partners working on these know or can be prompted to, to include those uh, for future safe plans, safety plans.
Yeah, and, and I, and I think that, that, um, that, that was not, we, we didn't give good examples to the sites for that, that section. I, I, I agree with you. There, there's some that looks, you know, pretty uh, thin, if you will, about um, just having bullet points that are not explained. And it, and it makes the assumption that somebody reading it knows what those programs are. Um, I, I, I think going forward, we, we would give um, uh, give the sites a, a little bit more um, kind of examples or models of, of what particularly that section should, should read. Uh, it should be a bit more, it shouldn't be the bullet points. It, it, um, it should have been more descriptive, to be honest. And, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing the sites. I think that was um, that was probably an oversight on, on my part that I didn't give a, a, a model of what that should look like.
Thank you. Um, and then uh, and I appreciate that. Um, and last question was just with regard to those surveys that go out for the staff after drills. Um, are those, are the survey responses things that get shared with, for example, the, like the Safety and Security Task Force with those task forces? Um, or site councils or who, who responses to those?
You know, it, it, it hasn't, not necessarily, uh, a lot, a lot of times we, we asked on the sa- Safety and Security Task Force, we, we have the um, uh, we, we kind of go around site to site and, and they give updates. Um, that's really when that time would be for if they have a, a lockdown drill and they will sometimes say, you know, what we noticed was uh, such, several classrooms needed uh, blinds to be repaired. Um, or we noticed that this locked door was s- stuck on open. Um, that, that's actually when that should be shared. Um, they're not, I, I wouldn't say that we've always done any formal survey that, that we've seen. Um, I, I know most of the time that um, mo- most, most of the time, there's like a shared document that, you know, if, if there's something that you want to give feedback to the administration or um, uh, you know, the, the, the leadership on campus. Um, that, that there's the shared document. That, that's how we, we, I, we would use to do it is we'd have a fire drill and say, okay, we're, we're, and any feedback that we need to know and, and any needs that need to be addressed. Um, so it, it's not a, a specific survey, if you will. Um, it's just more that that's part of the process is when you do the drills, what identifying, you know, don't, don't just do the drill and go back to the classroom. What, what, what do you see is, is needed? Um, I, I think that's more the process.
Brad, I just had a follow-up. I was just going through the website and I noticed that Medea does have a nice little video. And then so in the sidebar in the website for both Medea and Oak Park High School, I see the emergency information linked right there. So I don't know if it's been updated or there's a process to make sure that it's the most recent protocols. Um, but it looks great. The one thing I noticed is it's not the same for the three elementary schools. Like I don't see an emergency link. I tried to go under parents. I see things about traffic and safety, but I don't see a link to emergency protocols. So I'm just wondering if it's possible to get some sort of uniform link on the front because you know, when you're in a panic, you're not going to remember where to go. I can't find it under the thing. I think it's helpful to have it on the sidebar on the main page if we're going to be consistent across all the sites. And then the parents know you're in a pinch or you're in a panic or something happens. Here's the information, you know, that you need, at least what we can provide, you know, outside of what's on the plans on the site.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that's, that's part of the, again, the, the discussion with the, the site leadership is um, I, I, I think first of all, we, we do need to make sure that the, the, um, if there are videos that they're updated. Um, and, and, and or at least current information or appropriate information. Um, but I think it's a good discussion to have with uh, with, with the principals, you know, what, what and where should be, what information should be upfront. We should have the links to these plans overall, but then is there the site-specific things that we want parents or need parents to know? Um, you know, where, where should that be on the websites and such? But I, yeah, I, I do think that's, that's an additional conversation we need to have.
I have a very specific question, Brad. Thank you very much for your good work in all this. Uh, everything I know about school safety I learned from one night in Ventura County with the training I attended with my fellow board members. And one of the things I was really impressed by from the speakers was the importance of the relationship and the planning between local first responders and each school site director, principal, whatever the person of authority is. And I learned a new word that night and I had to Google it. And so since I Googled it, I actually remember the new word. It's called a Knox box. This was new to us. Remember, we talked about at the table, it apparently is a box that is secure and is accessible only by the local first responder of authority. And it gives them the ability to get access to the ways to get into a door that might have been locked by a an intruder or a, a bad agent, keeping out the people who are responsible for getting in and taking care of the kids. I don't know anything about knock box, Knox boxes. That was my first and only introduction to them. And I did a search in the plan to see if there's any mention and I didn't find it on a, on a PDF search, but you might have it in one of those non-disclosed areas. So I thought I'd ask.
Uh, you know what? I, 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 I think you caught something that is not actually in there, uh, and, but we do have. Um, tha- that's a really good point. Just made a note. That's um, we, we do have, there, there's a there's a li- little uh, lock box that um, or knock box that, that are accessible particularly to um, uh, the, the, the fire department. Uh, it's not just for like active assailants, but you know, if they, they need uh, access and keys to get into an, any um, uh, a- a- any rooms. Um, and that's, that's identified and outside um, on, on, on the school. Um, probably in a, in a place that you, you may not notice something, but it's a little kind of brass, brass box. In addition, there is um, a, a briefcase box that um, used to have a whole bunch of uh, items, but it's now, now keys and maps. And uh, the, the, the different sites have, I'm sorry?
Is that in Jeff's car?
Uh, very, very likely. No, it's actually usually in the principal's office or, or with the office manager. Um, and, and so if they, if they need to, they can access um, the, those keys and those maps as well. And it's, it's something um, you know, like for, for a principal in, uh, i- i- in, in the case of emergency like that, that's something that is, it's handed to um, the first responders. Um, uh, so that, that, tho- those do exist, but um, that is something that is, is not listed in here that we can add.
The important thing is they exist, but I just was double checking. If you want to include it in another version of this, write up, uh, your, your judgment call.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing, just a simple thing, really quick that people may not realize, but we have very, very strong relationships with Ventura County Sheriff and with the Highway Patrol and with the Fire Department. So we have their numbers, they have our numbers. And so when I say we, myself, Brad, Stu, Brendan, like we all have these numbers. And I know Enoch even has sometime, I, I know he has Sheriff Department numbers too, that you know, in case there's, you know, tech, uh, crimes, you know, technology stuff and things like that. So we have a very, very, very good relationship with Ventura County Sheriff, the CHP and the Fire Department. And um, something happens, I mean, I'll get a call at three in the morning. Sometimes Brad will get a call, you know, two thirty in the morning. Stu, Stu knows because he's, he's smiling because he knows he's gotten those calls many a time. So they let us know right away. And the other great thing about that relationship with the VC Sheriff is, so they'll investigate a crime. We had a crime at the district office uh, parking lot, I would say maybe six months ago. And some, you know, person up to no good, um, broke two windows out, uh, windows out of two cars and stole some things out of the cars and so on and so forth. It was very upsetting. And um, you know, they came out, they did a wonderful investigation. They took um, information and so on and so forth. Um, and you know, when that kind of stuff happens, you never really think you're ever going to hear back, right? Well, I heard back a week ago that they actually caught the criminals. And um, but that was a personal phone call and a personal text from Deputy Jones, who is our Oak Park deputy. So I just want people to know that this stuff really happens. There was also something else that happened in our community right around um, you know, Hanukkah, Christmas time, you know, in December. And um, the, the two adult victims, the, the two children that were, happened to be in the car are, are our students. Um, nothing happened physically to the students, but something did happen physically to the adults. And um, again, VC Sheriff, amazing work. And they have actually found the um, the perpetrators. They actually found the people that, that did this. And I don't know how they do it. I have no idea. I mean, they have a million different ways. I'm sure that they figured it out. But I got a phone call on that. And that did not even, the injured parties were not even our students or our employees. They, they happen to be our parents. But they felt compelled to call me to let me know that. So I just, I just wanted the community to know that our sheriffs are amazing and they do everything they can to help us every single day. So just want to let that be known.
I, I just have one quick follow-up um, comment to something that Megan mentioned, which is whether some of that feedback from our evacuation or safety drills that happen at the sites then are um, shared at the Safety and Security Task Force. I think, um, and Brad, you mentioned it, it is something that is supposed to be shared, I guess, during those updates. But, but I, but I do, you know, perhaps and, and I don't want to overstep, but it, it occurred to me that if it's just kind of a standing agenda item, I can see the benefit of the, the the sharing of information across the site so that one site can learn from another. Um, not only can, you know, the Safety and Security Task Force as that kind of body that advises on that on behalf of the district. But, but just making sure that, you know, especially since we do have some new administrators at sites who may not know that this was kind of, this is the forum um, where these updates are made, you know, um, could be, could be just a standing agenda item, just to make sure that that sharing happens. And, and then, you know, the appropriate policy or, you know, adjustments can be made. So just, just a suggestion there.
No, I thi- I think it's a really good suggestion and, and that, that we that, that we even, even kind of re-specify when we're go- going around site by site, that, that that's kind of what the purpose is. You know, it's, it's a safety, security focus. Um, are, are there updates? Are there, i- is there feedback from drills? I, I think uh, that, that's something we could even you know, put onto the agenda items specifically. But uh, when, when we next meet, um, we, we can even specify that. I think it's a very good suggestion.
Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Okay, so we are um, we're approving them. Is there a mo- is there a motion? Yes, we're approving them. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to seven business services, seven point one award installation services contract for Measure S project nineteen. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, he just jumped.
Hi Brad, I'm sorry. I was
No worries. You, you, it's late. You guys keep, keep going.
So I was trying to hurry. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. And thanks for zooming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know. I just had to blame someone else. Okay, thank you. That's a good friend. Um, so wait, we were on award installation services contract for Measure S project nineteen dash seventeen S emergency generator for district administrative office.
Rolls off the tongue.
So Brendan, just to confirm, so even though the bid is a hundred and twenty-four nine, nine hundred, we'll only be responsible for the twenty-five percent cost share. So I just want to thank you for going through the efforts of going through fee. I know firsthand how cumbersome and arduous the process can be. It's not easy. But this is such a great example, I think, of leveraging federal dollars that are out there um, to conserve our bond dollars. And so I really appreciate the efforts and this is obviously a very needed thing. So thank you. I just had one quick question. Um, you mentioned community feedback. Um, any concerns with the generator or?
No.
Okay.
No, they, um, received
Okay.
I, I, I would, this is not a good shout out to, um, Russell, Susan, and Derek, who is actually, I mean, Carpool will be up to stand by represent their confidence and credit. But that's what we're doing. So we got that in twenty-two.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that collaboration. I really appreciate it. So no other questions from you. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Brendan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Onto s- thank you, Brendan. Onto seven point two authorized Measure S project twenty-two dash twenty S network infrastructure upgrades and award related contract. Hi, thank you for waiting.
Um, the project we're talking about, Brad, is, um, the network infrastructure upgrade. It's been on, on plan for over ten years. Um, and so, uh, we know when, uh, the grid is going to be aging out and we just put it on a calendar and then we try to report it back. And so, uh, the project is not opening our network description infrastructure that natural wireless network infrastructure. And we delayed the upgrade of the wireless for uh, and we still have our old system, but it is aging out. It's not, uh, being updated anymore, but it's so good. And so we're kind of looking on by the time the switches are, are going to be aging out very soon. Yeah. So this project, uh, upgrades on the entire nervous system that I just um, and it was, uh, we went up, uh, to bid, uh, part of the federal E-Wake program. And by going through this program, we, uh, all the, all the over set, uh, this and we completed that, uh, uh, part B process over the summer. They went, uh, through, uh, mid-process, our, uh, our E-Wake consultant is a good communication. He went through years and he handled that whole process for us. They connected the grids and helped us evaluate the grids. We have three respondents, two of them which were, I think, were, uh, good requirements. And, uh, one with a little bit of a team, a hardened, which is our current network, uh, provider, uh, or network consultant. And they help us manage everything. Um, and we, they were ones that, uh, that was installed on wired network, uh, a few years ago. Uh, and then the other ones, they did, um, the company of San Diego. Um, and when we did look at both ends, um, our resident, uh, the global company actually had this, the lowest thing that they spent most of the days. They actually had zero contingency. They knew exactly what the, they didn't need. Uh, the other, the company that had a base bit plus contingency combined that was higher. And so we also felt like, and we took this to the tech committee, uh, we should do it then. Um, and, uh, we discussed the protocols and, uh, we, we definitely decided that advanced tools was the company that we really had worked in a relationship with. And we had confidence that we would be able to execute because they know our system. So, um, uh, the tech committee has approved it. Uh, we've experienced Measure S committee, uh, seven person, the whole committee, uh, asked me to, uh, and so there were several questions there, uh, there's one in the internet that we can move forward. So I'd like to, uh, to, uh, to prove this part. It is, we think we're out of measure S and it's, uh, sounds miracle, uh, we found money that we were debt and started still hold today. Um, and, uh, thanks to you and we just you would follow my, I'd rather work in a regular
Anyone has any questions? Someone asked a question I thought in Measure S that I thought was good, which was, um, you know, what, what will, will we see improved reliability? Will we see enhanced performance or it's just kind of?
No, we're actually right at the right time to, uh, upgrade to the next wireless infrastructure because we just released this this year, the new Y five six piece app, uh, which is, uh, the next major leap forward for the technology for Y five six. So only the latest, uh, pump, uh, home, this type of, this, you have uh, that over the next two, three years, everything is going to move over in Y five six. So we are at the right time to fit in with the first year, first release of these new Y five six access points that will give us increased speeds. We're also moving from two different providers, uh, we have currently Cisco providing our network switch gear and wireless providing our wires. And so we have to always work hard to get the two systems to talk to each other. And if there's a trouble shooting, we have to figure out where does the problem originate from and then make sure most systems are, are different. We're moving to a single vendor in the, uh, Baraki, which is Aron's system, providing both the switch gear and the wires. And that provides one thing last, but eventually if you're and really streamlining what we can do to make things work really smoothly upgraded. That's one, one, everything upgraded. So it'll lower the amount of work that we have to do and provide better, more reliable so the way we win and the stars align for us again at the right time. And by approving it now, we can sign a contract and it's not a nine month delay between orders and shipment. And we're just right in the right window to admit this because we're not going to swallow this until May. And this gives us time for, uh, supply chains and producing equipment. And hopefully we're not going to slip it through the model and I'm not going to do that.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, I think I just had asked a question, you know, given the large size of the contract, that we just want to make sure that it's going to be reviewed by our attorneys, Dr. Davis. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Talked to Adam about it. Yeah.
Thank you. So we're, um, we need a motion to um, award the contract and then the contract will come back. The actual contract comes back for ratification afterwards.
Brad, I think the example that was included was like typical boilerplate and I think out in the RFP and then afterwards there's some, you know, if there are any changes, it has to go through review for our council in case there's any language. And that will come back to us at a later date. Okay. Right. And typically what was attached anyways wasn't the final agreement anyways. It was just the standard that was proposed in the RFP response. Correct. Yes, exactly. So yes, so, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. So now we're on. Thank you so much, Enoch. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. Um, so now we're on to, um, human resources. I was going to ask. I, I just thought, so can we take the resolutions all at once? If, is that legal and appro- no, we can't. So there's the first three are the resolutions. Eight point one, I'm going to read them, okay? Eight point one, approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash two, release temporary certified employees number one, number eighteen. Eight point two, approve resolution twenty-two twenty-three dash three, reducing or discontinuing particular kinds of service for certified employees. And eight point three, approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, determination of seniority among employees with the same seniority date tiebreaker resolution. And we're allowed to take all those three. Oh, well, then I read all that. I'm sorry. Oh, so sorry. Well, I'm not going to read them again. Let's just start with eight point one. I apologize. I misunderstood.
So, um, thank you. Um, the first one here is, is release all temporary employees. Although when we write in temporary employees, they are aware that it is for a one-year contract on system. We're required to write codes of the, the status of the fault in their market. A lot of these, you proved it, not all of them will come back then here.
Okay, my apologies for misunderstanding the directions. Um, so we're just on eight point one only, resolution twenty twenty-three dash two. Is there any questions or comments? Is there a motion? And so
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Onto eight point two, resolution twenty twenty-three dash three.
Uh, so this one is, uh, this is, uh, right using that, uh, gives teachers that E based off of a, uh, uh, so it reduces down to their, uh, there's a lot of that, that's higher than that. So they're not, uh, they do that though. But for example, it's a, uh, that, uh, that E and the, uh, 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 here that's the enrollment or this, uh, for the services. And then, uh, that's two seven in the year. Sometimes, uh, a lot of employees, if you, uh, pump back out, you can get more normal with the year. So this is a resolution to have that follow it.
Okay, is there, I was just going to say that, okay.
This one has changed a tiny bit, um, and working with our Oak Park, uh, certification union, uh, we, uh, a little bit of a
Do we need, do you want to specify what that is or? It's in the, i- is it in the, uh, question?
One of the paragraphs, um, with regards to, uh, bummy, uh, we're alternative and, uh, there's a little paragraph, uh,
Okay. You want to have any questions? Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second? All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Onto resolution, onto item eight point three, which is to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-three dash four. Questions? Comments? Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we're on to item eight point four. And is it okay to take from eight point four to, I had it reversed. Eight point four to eight point nine, all the way to the end? It's okay? Is, does any board member have a problem taking all of these collectively? Okay, so do I need to read them or? Just say items eight point four to eight point nine. Does any? Anyone have any questions or? Okay, is there a motion to?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion for all eight point four to eight point nine. Now we're on to item nine, uh, I, item nine point one, approve twenty twenty-three CSBA delegate assembly election of candidate. And it looks like just the one Rebecca Becky Kramer from Pleasant Valley. So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we're on to, um, item ten, which is the board policies. Um, ten point one, approve amendment to board policy thirteen thirteen on civility.
So, um, we're recommending this amendment to the board because there was some language that was removed from the policy when CSBA updated it back in October twenty twenty-one with the CSBA recommended language. That language was taken and it was moved into another policy. And we feel that it, it also needs to be in this policy. So it's clear to people that are looking at the civility policy that, you know, it's exactly what's now in that other policy. And we think it's a very important thing and, um, uh, for our teachers and our other employees.
Anyone have any questions?
No, I just have one minor, um, edit, grammatical edit on, um, the first page. Second to last paragraph, starting with behavior by students, staff or parents. I think just the or is missing.
Oh, yeah.
That's it.
So with that addition, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to item ten point two, approve amendment to board policy nine three two three, meeting conduct.
So board by, this is a board by law.
Oh, so I mean, this is, these are recommendations. I mean, this is, these are recommendations from CSBA. I mean, I know it's a board by law, but we didn't. Oh, it's. Oh, that's right.
It's just an update.
Defining disruption. Okay.
I think we have discussed this previously, um, uh, maybe when it was proposed before it was passed. And we even had discussions around who would be the designated person. So I think this is just now putting it into writing.
Yes, okay. Does anyone have any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we're on to. Open discussion, future agenda items eleven point one, discussion on OPUSD's focus on Legislative Action Week. So I volunteered to, and I think so, and, and Megan too, um, to participate in that. Was there something we wanted? Did someone have a?
No, I, well, because I'm not, you know, this would be my first time participating. I didn't know if there was sort of a set, uh, menu of topics. Cause I did reach out to our Pacer rep to, to see, um, what the kind of process is, if we get to kind of raise our own issues or. So I know there is a training coming up, but. But, and it, but we had the board meeting before the training. So I, I, I just thought as a group, we could kind of discuss, like, if we do have the ability to raise our own issues that are important to the district, that's not sort of on this set menu that, you know, are going to be discussed. Um, um, what would, what would they be? Um, and, and, yeah, so just wanted to open that discussion.
I just wanted to say that I, this, I haven't done this either in the past. This would be my first time too. So I don't have an answer to that question about whether it's a menu. I suspect it's a menu, but.
Yeah.
Um, but if not, I mean, I definitely agree that, you know, we should be coordinated. Yes.
I definitely have some suggestions for you guys. I'm not a board member, but a part of the governance team, right? So I think TK funding, especially facilities funding is huge. Um, we did get, um, just, I just, I wanted to, we just got another little bit of funding, but it's very small amount to help with supplies and, you know, tables and chairs and things like that. But there is no funding for facilities and they've pushed it out. They, meaning the legislature and the governor have pushed it out to twenty-four, twenty-five at the earliest to even talk about it, having it in the budget. It's a big, big issue for not just our district, but every district. So by talking about this at Legislative Action, I think every district will jump on and go, yeah, absolutely. Another thing that I think is really important is a state. Um, and this may get a little political, but a state facilities bond, because many of our school districts, not just here in Oak Park, but also in the state. Aging facilities and if we, and you know, looking at our situation with measure S with twelve million dollars left until twenty thirty-two. That's a big deal and we have many, many facilities here that are aging. Yeah, we'll get some money back, modernization. We'll get some money back from different things, but it's, who knows when it's going to come and how much that's going to be. We don't really know. So I think that's another thing. Something really pertinent to right now is how the state is dealing with ADA, average daily attendance in the district. So in our, there, there's enrollment and there's average daily attendance and the average daily attendance is the critical piece because, um, that's, yeah, that, that's where the money comes, you know, um, for the school districts. And when we get that money, I mean, that's what provides programs and materials and everything we have in our school district really, um, is based off of ADA, you know, how many teachers we hire, you know, everything you could possibly think of. So what's happened is they, the state stopped the, um, hold harmless on attendance that they were having during the prime COVID years. Uh, my opinion and many superintendents throughout the state think that was really short sighted. Because what happened is habits were created in terms of, it's great for family, like families, you know, parents working from home now and stuff like that. It's amazing, but what's happened is students are being taken out for vacations for two or three weeks. And things like that have happened because people's lives have changed and their whole way of living has changed and working has changed. And so what, what happened, what's happened is we're having students, and again, not just Oak Park Unified, but every district I've spoken to, major differences between their attendance first semester, which is called, there's a date in first semester called, they call it P one. There's a date in spring called P two. P one was lower statewide in almost every single district. But P two is a real key marker and if P one was lower, P two is probably a lot lower in most districts. So it's because habits are set and that's just what keeps happening as the school year goes on. Um, we're trying to mitigate it here in Oak Park. We have, we have, uh, our schools doing different things to incentivize attendance and things like that. But, um, ours was still lower at every single level except the high school, which is interesting. Um, but it's going to affect the bottom line financially and that is a problem for not just Oak Park, but every district in the state. So the reason I bring up these three are because it's not just us. It's, I can't see anybody not jumping on board of those. So those are the three that are on the top of my head. When I saw this in the agenda, I, I knew I wanted to, uh, present that to you guys.
I appreciate that input and I also appreciate, uh, Trustee Hardy for bringing this because typically, you're right, the board would kind of adopt a legislative platform that we're all in agreement on and also that probably coincides with CSBA and also our, our union as well. It might be worthwhile to solicit some input there just to make sure we're all, we're having a cohesive, I guess, platform on which we're advocating for. And the only other thing I would, uh, talk about, I think the arts block grant, were there some concerns there, Dr. Davis, about that? That, you know, I think a lot of these districts have already adopted plans and now I think there's some dial back potentially to these funds. So that would be another one.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. Please advocate to maintain the funding for that because that is very unfair. And part of it was, I'm so glad you brought that up, uh, uh, Trustee Wang, because part of the reason that was given in the January, uh, budget proposal was, oh, we have Prop twenty-eight now. So because we have Prop twenty-eight and it'll be there forever, oh, we're good, you know, we don't have to give us, but well, there, there are different purposes. They're completely different purposes. The arts, music instructional block grant is completely discretionary. It can be used for arts, music, instruction materials, buying down pensions. It can be used for anything, right? Anything you want to do. Whereas Prop twenty-eight is fantastic. We're fine, we will finally have in the state, money coming every year for the performing, for the arts in school districts. It's never happened before. It's a wonderful thing. But eighty percent of that money has to be spent on personnel and it has to be new personnel or personnel that have not been paid for out of district funds. Twenty percent is discretionary, you know, supplies and sheet music and things like that. So they're not the same. And so when, when the word came out that they're looking at cutting this allocation, I don't mean to give anybody a, a hard issue at this moment, but for our district, that would be nine hundred thousand dollars that we were planning on using in our district for a variety of reasons, whether it be arts, music, construction materials, buy down, pension, whatever. Like that's what we were going to be using that for. So that would be a major hit and nine hundred thousand in Oak Park? Can you imagine the bigger districts in the county would have hit they would get? So you're, you're right. No one will not jump on that train. Everyone will jump on that train.
Thank you. Um, so I guess what would next steps be, you know, we've had input tonight, obviously from Dr. Davis. I'd like to be able to memorialize this somewhat so we're kind of all on the same page and our reps who are going to the Legislative Action Week, so I am Denise and Megan, and have these uniformed talking points. But were there anything, other issues that were specific? I, I, I think it might be worthwhile, I don't know, to convey just kind of the on the ground perspective of some of the state actions that have happened in terms of, you know, universal meals are a wonderful thing, right? But then also the conversion over to the bell schedule, you know, we've lost a fabulous support period model that I think has been just wonderful for our particular district. And just a reminder that we need some local flexibilities. Um, that's just been my perception to adapt and adopt, you know, in ways that really work. So that it's kind of a do no harm policy again, right? So if we had such a great system going, um, we should be allowed to have some flexibility at the local level, I think, to decide.
So thank you for bringing that up. So you're, you're, you're peaking, you're, you know, hitting my, my brains here are starting to wake up again. Um, that is a huge thing and, um, our dear friend and partner, Bob Blatner, when he was, when he was alive, that was one of the last things he wrote me about was that kind of thing, what you just said, you know, topic that you just talked about. So I think, you know, the, the, cause I had reached out to him and I had said, you know, we are really frustrated with this late start bill. This late start bill does not work for everybody and why would rural school, rural school districts be exempt from this bill? And, um, as you guys know, I, um, I work with, uh, Dr. Van Luven and the districts up there in, um, San Andres Valley. Some of them are considered rural. They're exempt from the late start bill. So they allowed those districts to be exempt for whatever reason. I have no idea why. I don't know what it matters if you're rural, suburban or urban to be exempt, but they were allowed to have flexibility. Why are any, why isn't any other school district allowed to have flexibility? Because what it's, we, we completely understand the research behind it. We totally understand the need for sleep. Like we, we get all that, like that is understandable. But to put these, um, what I feel are arbitrary, um, drawn from the sky laws and provisions and things into this, nobody really, it, it doesn't make any sense. And if you had something that was working already, you could, why couldn't you just keep it? Why couldn't there have been a, a, a clause in the law that allowed districts to do that? You know, some districts, districts may not have had that and they have, may have been searching for a new bell schedule that would fit pretty much exactly what they're saying. So again, I think, I think our school and our district have done a great job, at least getting to this point, whatever. But I agree a hundred percent. I, I think there should, you know, we have a local control funding formula that isn't so local control anymore. So I think, you know, having flexibility in this would be great. And again, this is another one, I don't think you'll have any arguments from anybody throughout the state. I think, and we're not saying the rules shouldn't have that, but we're saying is why shouldn't other people have that flexibility? It's a really, really, really good point.
So, so this is a great list and it's already five and, um, five big issues. Um, and so just in terms of like next steps, what I would propose is the training is tomorrow, tomorrow. So we'll, I, I think we're all, we're going to tend, tend that.
I can't attend because Jim and I will be at office hours tomorrow.
That's right.
Um, but I've, I've participated in things like this before.
Okay.
If there are any really sort of key thing, like login to, here's the password to log into the Zoom, whatever it is. Um, if one of you could share it with me or through Rogany, whatever it is, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, and, and so what we can do after we tend that is maybe through you, Rogany, we can sort of just provide you an update of like, what's the format? Do we have, you know, I, I, I imagine they are going to, CSBA probably does have its own through its lobbying efforts and, and through communications with its districts, a list. But I'm hoping that we will be able to then maybe add on one or two of our own kind of, um, district specific. And so once we, once we get that, we can share that with you, Rogany. And then, um, maybe you can, and maybe in Friday notes, um, update the board. And then ledge action week is, I think, the second week in March. Is that right? Yeah. So we will have then like two weeks to then, I think, I, I remember kind of in the initial, um, communications around this that they, they said, oh, and so you're, there are going to be these set meeting times with your local legislators. And this is, this is, you know, um, it would be great for you as local districts to have very specific examples of how, you know, these particular policies have impacted your district, kind of make it more personal, kind of, you know? But I think then we'll, we'll kind of work with Rogany and Jeff to. Yeah, figure out like what, what, what are the, what are the points? And maybe like each of us can take like one or two and depending on what the issue is, we can work with staff to kind of come up with our little bullet point.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And, um, Rogany sent me the, um. Okay, so it looks like they, there's a preview that, that budget advocacy priority. So it'll be, um, there, um, they want to highlight some of the top issues would be, um, urging the legislator to fully fund the LCFF cost of living adjustment without cutting the arts, music and instructional materials block. So I think that's probably going to be the, um, main issue. But the, but I think it's good for us to have these other bullets prepared as well if we have someone's ear. I don't know how this works exactly, but.
I think those personalized stories. Will be really very important to us and I don't know if there's other specific things like district of choice or other things that we want to just consider. And Dr. Davis, just to advise on, um, for these personal impacts. I think legislators are always good people and want to do the right thing, but to the extent they understand the impacts of those actions, I think these compelling examples would be very vital to the story. I also just shared with Rogany to distribute to the board to CSBA does have a policy platform page. Um, so there's a lot of information there on legislative advocacy and legislative news. And it taught, and, and they have the twenty-two, twenty-three policy platform. There's a link on there. And it's, it's much more generic, I think, than the specific items that Rogany just sent out related to this particular budget cycle. But I think as a whole, it might be a good practice for those that are attending just to kind of review this, if it's renewed, the whole process.
Okay.
The, just from past experience, not at, at the state rep level, but they might group us. I don't know how they'll end up grouping us together, but they may group us with like representatives from other districts. And it might, you know, we might not get any time at all to raise our, uh, specific points. Um, and I'm, you know, we may be in different groups across the whole week and just keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, and I, I anticipated that too. I think part of this too is just so that our local legislators get to meet the board representatives if they haven't already, um, and start kind of a relationship so that then we can do follow-on meetings with our, um, you know, state and federal legislators and staff. So I, I think it's not meant to be sort of a one and done, but to the extent that we can use this as an opportunity. Um, I thought it'd be good for us to kind of as a group decide like, what are the issues that we do want to advocate for on behalf of the district?
Okay. Um, okay, should we move on? To, um, eleven point two, special meeting in March to discuss mid-year progress on district and board goals. Um, so we're a little late on updating or doing like a mid-year look at our goals. Um, and then also we talked about, you know, after going to CSBA conference in December, um, looking at how, what our process is for setting goals going forward. And how that might maybe needs to be based on what we learned revised a little bit and, um, coordinated with the superintendent's goals and the LCAP goals and how we do that. But it seems like it's, um, you know, might take a little bit more work offline. And so in addition to having a, a mid, an extra meeting in March to talk about, um, progress on our, our mid-year update on our goals, to ask, um, two board members, I'd like to be involved, so maybe one other board member with me, if that's okay with all of you, to kind of maybe map out a little bit of, of a process for, um, setting our, having input. And you know how we talked about having input into the LCAP and, um, goals or the LCAP process from a board perspective or a board lens? And as we go into the budget process and then that setting the, the goals right after the, the, the budget is, right? We talked about doing that at the end of June. So is there someone who wants to work on that offline and then we can report back, you know, give an update and, and do some legwork for the whole, the whole body, um, when we do meet?
So that is. Again, the, um, is that sort of related to like who and I worked on in terms of calendary borrowing from? Maybe it kind of makes sense for us to continue that.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Just for continuity. You're both very good at it.
Well, she's better at it actually than me, but, um, um, but it helps, yeah. So, um, is that okay with you guys? Okay, so we'll do it. It's, it would be an ad hoc subcommittee of the board to look, to, to.
look at governance and goal setting for the, the governance process of goal setting for the following year, right? No, we don't have any. The, so it's all on Zoom, I can't imagine it's in the evening. But that would be a long day for someone who's well, we have the training tomorrow. So I guess if we did, well, first of all, can everybody do the fourteenth? Because if Okay, so at five? I think we do, cuz we are not gonna go, wait, it's finished today, so, yeah, if four, five thirty, if that's okay, whatever, I don't know how people's work schedule is. Is five o'clock okay for everybody? You guys are? Okay, so it would be, and, and subject to if we're tied up in the, that, the Legislative Action Week, but hopefully it won't be too bad, or we can choose sometimes. And that is to discuss the, that meeting is to discuss
Mid-year progress.
Mid-year progress.
District and board goals.
And the subcommittee is to gather information on the progress to report out?
No, the staff would give us an update on the goals, our district goals, where we're at. And I don't know if the subcommittee would have any information just yet, like, maybe we might have a timeline or something, but I'm not sure, so if we do, then we could put that on the agenda as well, and then also close session for what we didn't finish tonight would be, so that would be, those three things would be on March fourteenth, or could be on March fourteenth. But at a minimum, it would just be the staff giving us an update on our goals where we're at.
Okay, and then the timeline would be for sort of next milestones throughout the year to discuss.
Goals for the following, the future ones.
We could peel off and put on the fourteenth?
Work it easy.
Okay, but we'll make sure we're, we give them a lot of notice, okay? So there's that, there were, there would be that possibility as well. We don't wanna surprise anyone. Okay. Any other, does that, did I cover everything? Okay, so then that's it. So we're not gonna return to closed session, we are just going to adjourn. There are motion, there's no other items, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're adjourned at ten oh two, thank you everyone, I'm sorry the meeting went so long, thank you.